Chair, it's nine o'clock. You're ready to start?
Okay. Good morning on this January 26th at nine o'clock, 2021, for the meeting of the Santa Cruz County Board of Supervisors. Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Yes, Supervisor Koenig.
Here.
Friend?
Here.
Coonerty?
Here.
Capit?
Here.
And Chair McPherson.
Here. We will now move to item number two, and before we have a moment of silence, I'd like to acknowledge that the passing of a great person for our county, Mr. Robert Bob Shepherd. He was a tremendous person who was Finance Director for the City of Santa Cruz for 14 years. He came to, he worked at the county before becoming Finance Director, and then he was Chair of the County Oversight, Treasury Oversight Committee. Then he went into teaching at San Jose State and at UCSC from Utah up there for 1983 to 2015. He was the founder and professor of accounting up there and received some statewide excellence award for teaching and from the California Society of CPAs Outstanding Educator Award. Tremendous accomplishment. He was a tremendous person, a great family man, and we're going to miss Robert Shepherd. He is a great public service force. I don't know if anybody else might have a comment with anyone? If not, we'll have a moment of silence and then recite the Pledge of Allegiance. Have a moment of silence. Okay, I think we will now recite the Pledge of Allegiance. I think it's appropriate to, you can be seated as you, we recite the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. We will now go to item number three, the consideration of late additions to the agenda, additions and deletions to the consent and regular agenda. Mr. Blasius, do we have anything?
Yes, Chair McPherson, we do have a number of corrections and an addenda to the agenda. On the regular agenda, item number 12, there's a correction. The item should read, "Consider directing the Planning Department to explore a permitting process for tiny homes, including movable tiny homes, tiny homes on wheels, and tiny homes on foundation in the ADU code amendments as legal accessory dwelling units, as outlined in the memorandum of Supervisor Koenig and Supervisor McPherson." There's also additional materials. There's a revised memo, packet pages 201 and 203. On the consent agenda, on item number 34, there's additional materials. Attachment E, ADM 29 form, and attachment F, grant information worksheet. On item 40, there's a revised memo, packet page 503. On item 51, there's a correction. The item should read, "Differ to February 23rd, 2021, approval of agreements for CZU lightning complex fire emergency actions related to road debris removal, ditch cleaning, bridge replacement, road reconstruction, and culvert and guardrail repairs impacting critical roadway facilities, and direct the Public Works Department to return honor before March 23rd, 2021 with administration status of emergency work closeout and final cost on each, as recommended by the Deputy CIO, Director of Public Works." There's, on this item, there's also an additional materials. There was a revised memo, packet page 602. And then we have one addenda on the consent agenda. This is item 53.1. This is to direct the Chair to write letters to our state legislative delegation in support of Senate Bill 74, the Keeping California Working Act, as recommended by Supervisor Coonerty. There's a board memo printout. There's bill text of SB 74, and there's a fact sheet to keep California working up. That concludes the corrections and addenda to the agenda, Chairman McPherson.
Thank you. Okay, we will move to item, excuse me, just a second. Now move to public comment. And before we, we get there, I'd just like to make a comment of my own. It's hard to believe that we might have a real debris flow crisis tomorrow or in the days following in this sunny day that we're experiencing right now without much wind. But we expect a very heavy rainstorm with winds possibly up to 50 or 60 miles an hour tomorrow night. I just want to thank everyone involved for the debris flow and evacuation planning. This county has been planning for this, well, we hope this event may never come. We hope it never does. But we've been planning for months on how best to plan for this situation and try to target where the storm might hit. But I want to just, I can't overstate how critical it is for people to evacuate after receiving a warning. The Sheriff's Department yesterday started, I think, at nine in the morning and went into the late afternoon to try to contact as many of the households, I think there's 2,800 households with 5,000 people. Whoops, did you lose me? I'm sorry if you did. See?
We hear you. We hear your charge.
Okay, I'm sorry. I'll get back on. And there was 5,000 people that were involved. The evacuation points at San Jose Valley Schools, at Pacific Elementary School in Davenport, and then at the Community Center and Scott Valley will be available for people to come and park their cars or trailers there if they wish. The evacuation of animals with that will have, going to the fairgrounds as the staging point for PG&E is at the Graham Hill showgrounds now. Our planning process has been significant, and I think it is the willingness of our residents to evacuate that will really truly save lives. We know it's a lot to ask to leave your home, especially if the debris flows don't actually materialize. But the conditions are there for it to happen, so we need to be cautious and prepared. And I want to just urge anyone to adhere to the evacuation orders that they have received, and we hope this gets past us as soon as possible if at all it arrives. But we just, I can't overstate how much, how much time and effort has gone into this from so many departments to make things safe for everyone should a debris flow activity really take place. So thank you, everyone, for adhering to those warnings and those orders. We appreciate it very much.
Chair McPherson?
Yes.
This is Carlos Palacios. I believe we skipped over item number four.
Oh, I'm sorry. That's just my, okay, I was getting a little anxious, I guess. Item number four, thank you. The announcement by board members of items removed from the consent agenda to the regular agenda. Is there anyone that wanted to remove an item? Let me see here. I'm sorry, did I lose you for a while?
You lost us for a little bit, but you're back now.
Okay, I'm sorry. I don't know what's happened. The storm hasn't hit. I'll just put it that way. Excuse me, I skipped over item number four, the announcement by board members of items they want to have removed from consent to the regular agenda. Is there any item that you would like to have removed? Any board member? Okay, saying none, I've made my public comment about the debris flow. Are there any other comments from the public? This is the time for any person, may address the board once during the public comment period, not exceeding two minutes. The comments must be directed to items on today's consent and closed agenda items. Yet to be heard items on the regular agenda, on topic on today's agenda, but within the jurisdiction, not on today's agenda, but within the jurisdiction of the board. We'll take public comments now up to 30 minutes, and if necessary, additional time for public comments will be allowed after we continue, end today's regular agenda. Do we have any public comments?
Good morning, Chair, and yes, we do. And I will just reiterate that we have on the slide in front of people who are watching through Zoom, how to connect either by telephone and/or through the Zoom app. We have five hands up. The first person is calling with a telephone number that ends in 1999. You give me one second, I'll bring up the timer and you can start. Okay, so speaker number 199, you will be asked to be unmuted. You have two minutes to speak. I'm unmuting you. Please accept the unmute and start speaking. The timer will begin when you start speaking.
Good morning. My name is James Yulian Whitman. Can I be heard?
Yes, we hear you. Thank you.
Excellent. Good morning, everyone. I'm going to take the two minutes. I wish I had longer. You know, as part of the consent agenda, item number 17, approval of the reading by title of any ordinance considered for adoption that may appear on this agenda, and then it goes into some detail. I don't know, I'm questioning that. Nothing's really going to change. Item 14A that has to do with a closed conference with legal counsel threat to public services or facility, government code section 54957A. Who knows what you guys are going to be talking about? But I, as a concerned community member, would like to know more about this. I've spoken on many subjects in the past. With what's going on in our county and the nation and the world, there's a lot of troubling things going on. And I've spoken about the ICD codes where any two members who are chosen or elected could decide to imprison any other committee member or things maybe even worse than that. So with the limited time I have left, I've been involved with some service groups that provide films to the public to educate the public on things that are going on. And there were two community members from out of this county that traveled to this county to discuss some things. Now, I don't know how many contact tracers they have in the Gilroy County, but in Santa Cruz, we have 70. And there's generally less than seven people that speak in these counties for these meetings, and it'd be nice if we could have three minutes. So what they were saying and sharing with us is that the contact tracers are going to largely residences where English is the second language, and they are getting these people to be tested. And I know looking at the information on the, on the
Thank you. The next speaker is Olivia Martinez. You have two minutes to speak. I am unmuting you. Please accept the unmute and start speaking. The timer will begin when you start speaking.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, we hear you. Thank you.
All right. This is Olivia Martinez. I'm the Region Two Director for SEIU Local 521. So I'm calling regarding item 25 of the consent agenda. And I had sent an email to all the Board of Supervisors in December letting you know that the City of Santa Cruz had approved in December to extend the FFCRA sick leave for their employees. And we were very grateful that they did that. Other agencies have done the same thing after we've asked them to do so. The county has agreed to extend the FFCRA sick leave. However, we are asking the board to approve it to be retro to January 4th. We've seen from the beginning of January 4th, an escalation of members that have been COVID-19 positive or their family members. And we feel that many of them have struggled because they don't have enough sick time or they use all of their sick time. And so we're hoping it's the right thing to do since we did talk to the county in December. And it took up until January 26th for them to make a decision to take it to you guys. So that's why we're asking. It would be grateful from our members that you do that to retro it to January 4th. Thank you so much.
Thank you. The next speaker is a caller. If your number ends in 2915, you will have two minutes to speak. I am unmuting you. Please accept the unmute and start speaking. The timer will begin when you start.
Hello, this is Becky Steinbruner. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Thank you. Good morning, Supervisors. I am also concerned about the impending storm. And I'm very concerned that evacuees from the CZU area are not being allowed to bring their animals to the Santa Cruz County Fairgrounds. What are these people supposed to do? The Graham Hill Showgrounds also are not available for animal evacuations because PG&E has leased it out 100%. A small number of spaces are available at Quail Hollow County Park, but that quickly filled. And now the Ecoin evacuation group is scrambling for places to put animals, for people, so they can evacuate. If they can't evacuate with their animals, they may not. Now, I want to know, why is the Santa Cruz County Fairground not available for these people? There is a 30-year contract between the fairgrounds and the county for times just like these. Why is that contract not being honored? I would like a response this morning because this is critical. I did write to Mr. Beaton and I copied Chair and Vice Chairs McPherson and Koenig on that. I really need an answer, as does the public. I also want to speak to consent agenda item 22, the county fire cow fire budget. The grand jury report urged you to cause cow fire to be more accountable. This report, this budget report is not. $85,000 for a steel building. It is not explained at all in the documentation. How will this serve county fire and those who are paying a new benefit assessment tax? Which needs to be adjusted, by the way, for the hundreds of homes in the county fire area who have, that burned, but are still now
Thank you. Our next caller is Carol Bjorn. You have two minutes to speak. I am unmuting you. Please accept the unmute and start speaking. The timer will begin when you start speaking.
Good morning. This is Carol Bjorn. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Awesome. So in my past communication with the board about the governmental restrictions around stopping the spread of COVID, I've relied either on the law, California Emergency Services Act, or science. So far, relying on the law or science has not yielded any change in a lessening of the governmental restrictions that are still being imposed on the people of this county. And it's been more than 10 months after the declaration, after the state of emergency by the governor, which was on March 4th, 2020. And so today, I want to change kind of my approach and just appeal to common sense. And in that regard, I want to speak to, to like what might be impending, I guess, as far as governmental regulations. And that is, you know, whether there's going to be a mandatory requirement for vaccination. So I, I'm curious, why would we need a vaccination for a disease that has a 99% recovery rate? And so I want, I'm just going to repeat that so that everybody can think about that for a second. I feel like everyone is so caught up in the fear that they're not really So here's the question again. Why would we need a vaccination for a disease with a 99% recovery rate? So with that, I yield. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is a caller whose number is private. If you have a private telephone number, you're being asked to unmute. You will have two minutes to speak. Once you accept the unmuting, please start speaking and the timer will start. Private caller. Okay, we'll go to the next speaker. The next speaker, and I am sorry, I'm going to massacre your name, is Concepcion Viscara. Your last name is Viscara. You will have two minutes to speak. I'm unmuting you. Please accept the unmute and start speaking. The timer will begin when you start speaking.
Good morning. My name is Concepcion Viscara, and I am calling, in essence, to be the voice of the unrecognized essential workers that we have out in the fields doing hard labor and having to deal with this terrible pandemic. With your permission, I would like to have somebody read it and then be able to translate.
Buenos dias. Mi nombre es Sandra Santos. Trabajo en el campo pescando fresas y vivo en Watsonville. Mientras estamos de acuerdo con la decisión del Estado ayer, 25 de enero de 2021, extender la moratoria de los desalojos hasta el 30 de junio de 2021, les pedimos a la junta de supervisores que nos ayuden a obtener los 2.6 mil millones en ayuda para inquilinos que ellos también prometieron. Ahora mismo, es la situación que estamos atravesando con COVID. No hay suficientes trabajos y necesitamos extender la moratoria a los desalojos. Desafortunadamente, no tenemos suficientes recursos para pagar el alquiler atrasado y el alquiler que sigue. En general, no tenemos suficientes salarios para cubrir todos nuestros gastos. Y desafortunadamente, somos muchas personas que estamos pasando por lo mismo. Y es por eso que nos unimos para pedirles que se aseguren de que la ayuda para inquilinos llegue a las familias de bajos ingresos. Y que los salarios en este condado para los trabajadores sean salarios dignos para los que, para lo que nuestra economía pueda mejorar, para que podamos cubrir todos nuestros deudas. Como delegado del Consejo de Beneficios para Trabajadores de Santa Cruz, estoy aquí para pedir en nombre de los trabajadores agrícolas y otros trabajadores que nos defiendan. Gracias.
In essence, although they agree with the eviction moratorium through January 30th, they're right now, they're in a situation that they're going through with COVID. There's just not enough work and they need the, to extend the moratorium on evictions at the end of this month. Unfortunately, we do not have enough resources to pay back rent and the rent that follows. In general, we don't have enough money.
You can, Mrs. Kara, you can continue speaking. You're getting the time for two speakers for the translation?
Thank you very much. Unfortunately, we're struggling just to make ends meet and having to pay the rent back. We don't have enough salaries to cover all of our expenses, much less just to get internet for our kids and to feed them. There are many people who are going through the same thing, and that is why we are coming together to ask you to ensure the renters' aides gets to low-income families and that wages in this county for workers are living wages so that our economy can improve, so we can cover all of our debts. As a delegate of the Santa Cruz Workers Benefit Council, I am here to ask on behalf of farmworkers and other workers to advocate for us, please, and thank you very much.
Thank you. The next speaker is Jen Levini. You will have two minutes to speak. I am unmuting you. Please accept the unmute and start speaking. The timer will begin when you start.
Good morning, Supervisors. Thank you for discussing tiny homes, item number 12. My name is Jen Levini, and I'm a real estate and housing lawyer. I live in the Liveout Pleasure Point area, and I'm the author of the Tiny Home Law Book called Building, Occupying, and Selling Tiny Homes Legally. Excuse me. I've been studying tiny homes as a housing solution for seven years. What I'd like to do is describe how tiny homes are used by families as ADUs. Tiny homes on wheels are generally purchased for between $50,000 and $100,000, which means that if somebody finances them, they have an RV payment of approximately $350 per month. They're easy to set up in a family's backyard. Typically, families, I don't know why I sound so nervous. Typically, families will use them for their family use, for example, housing for their teenagers or as an additional bedroom for a couple of years. If you have teenagers, you understand. Then when their teenagers grow up and leave home, they rent out their tiny home, creating additional housing for a few years, which also creates income for the homeowners. Then after retirement, people downsize and move into the tiny homes in their backyard and rent out their larger family homes. This creates housing for families as well as income for working families. Tiny homes are a great solution for long-term problems, including housing and income for working families, which are both problems in our community. And I hope you support this, and thank you for listening.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Bernard. Bernard, you were being asked to unmute. You will have two minutes to speak. Please accept the unmute and start speaking. The timer will begin when you start.
Good morning, Chair, Board. My name is Bernard Gomez. I'm here to speak on consent item number 33. And my thing is, the probation officer has requested for almost a double of the amount for, for a county's continuing agreements list, right? And so right now, there's a big shift on, with the Department of Juvenile Justice realignment, SB 823, the closure of state facilities, right, bringing our youth home that are out of the county. And, you know, this, this item is, is requesting to continue to send youth out of county for ranch camp purposes. Now, my concern is, one is, you know, the COVID regulations, right, there's other counties across the state that have stopped, you know, accepting youth, you know, due to those regulations or to the danger of it. And however, Uba County is still continuing. And I'm just seeking to, you know, put a stop to that and, you know, keep our, our youth safe, right? There is a 4,000 a month expenditure to house each kid in that facility. So just thinking about what can we do with, with this money and reinvest it into this, this county's, you know, is considered a site county, right, when it comes to juvenile justice issues? So, you know, we should, you know, maintain that, that our youth here at home, you know, closer to their families, figure out new ways, new opportunities, you know, not just send them out for, you know, for continued confinement and stress-related, you know, just impacts that's going to happen. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is a caller. If your telephone ends in 8045, you will have two minutes to speak. I'm unmuting you. Please accept the unmute and start speaking. The timer will begin when you start.
Good morning. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Hi, my name is Ellie Black. I've been a speaker in public comment for many years here. And I'm wondering today if the council is aware of the article that has been circulating in our community now for several weeks discussing the community foundation that appears to be running most of the services and actions that have been taking place since the pandemic began. There are some pretty strong claims in this article, and myself and others have looked into it, and it appears to be accurate. And if it is accurate, what does that mean as far as the citizens of this community being represented by the people who we choose in the elections to actually represent us? I'm wondering if this foundation has the best interest of Santa Cruz County residents at heart, or if this is something that is a bigger picture and we are just being used as pawns in a larger scheme? I certainly hope that our elected officials are acting in the best, acting in the best interest of their constituents. But I really have to question a lot of these things in there. If these are being run by private foundations with anonymous donors, how do we know what the actual purpose is of all the actions that are being taken? As many have already spoken about the logistics and the common sense behind this lockdown that's killing small businesses and causing so many problems in our community based on a, an illness that has a 99% recovery rate? If this really makes sense? So I don't expect a response, as usual, but I would appreciate a response if that's possible. So, I don't expect a response as usual, but I would appreciate a response if that's possible and I'm certain.
The next caller is Stephen. You have two minutes to speak. I am unmuting you. Please accept the unmute and start speaking. The timer will begin when you start. Stephen, if you're still on, please accept the unmute. Okay, we're gonna move to the next person. It's a telephone caller. If your telephone number ends in one four zero one, you will have two minutes to speak. I'm unmuting you. Please accept the unmute and start speaking. The timer will begin when you start.
Oh?
Hello.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. This is Marilyn Garrett. I'm excerpting from Robert F. Kennedy Jr.'s website, children'shealthdefense.org. It's the topic Big Pharma Views. Join me in supporting Dr. Paul Thomas, pediatrician, a hero defending children's health. Dr. Thomas is leading the battle to practice ethical healthcare and evidence-based medicine, honor informed consent, and stand up against medical coercion at every level. Please join me in supporting his efforts. And what they did was compared from his practice in Portland, Oregon, integrated pediatric, vaccinated children with unvaccinated children. Vaccinated children, he states, appear to be significantly less healthy than the unvaccinated. It is time to state this fact. Vaccines are not safe. Vaccines are associated with significant acute and chronic health issues in children, including asthma, allergic rhinitis, breathing problems, behavior issues, ADHD, respiratory infection, ear pain, other infections, the list goes on. The article has graphs comparing what he's stating here. And he says, "It is unethical to administer an experimental COVID- nineteen vaccine that has no long-term safety testing without setting up a system to compare."
Thank you. And Chair McPherson, that is the last caller that we have for public comment.
Thank you. Before we get to the board members to comment, I think we can have a brief explanation about two of these items. The one on the animals, I know we we opened a vaccination clinic there and so it changed some of the way we were doing things. Ms. Coburn, I think you can explain what is going on at the fairgrounds as far as animals and so forth?
Yeah, thank you, Chairman Pearson. So it is correct that the animal shelter and Equine Evac are triaging the animals at Quail Hollow. They're asking folks to come there. There are a number of sites that they're redirecting animals to, one of which is the fairgrounds. The fairgrounds is serving as an overflow site for animal evacuations. The stables are open. They've received about thirty horses at Quail Hollow and redirected them to a variety of ranches. The shelter has also accepted some animals into its operations. So I would encourage people looking or needing help with evacuations to go to Quail Hollow or to contact the Equine Evac hotline. And let me see if I can get you that number. The number to call is eight three one seven oh eight eight nine nine eight.
Okay, thank you. I hope that clarifies the situation. I know it's a moving target, so to speak, with the clinic that we set up there at the fairgrounds as well. So, thank you for that explanation. There's one other item that was brought up. I think we can get a quick explanation from our personnel director on item number twenty-five on the emergency paid sick leave, Ajita Patel.
Chair, give me one second and I will get Ajita on so she can speak to you.
Very good.
Ms. Patel, you can now speak.
Good morning, Chair McPherson, members of the board. On item number twenty-five, this is a letter to go ahead and extend the Families First Coronavirus Relief Act, and it actually will bridge the gap for any employees who needed to be off for COVID-related reasons from January one through the twenty-sixth. So as to Ms. Martinez's comments, it does serve the purpose that she was hoping for.
Good. Thank you for clarifying that and I appreciate some quick responses to some inquiries we had. Now I'll ask the board if they have any comments on the consent agenda, items they might want to pull or just comments on any item. Supervisor Coney?
Yes, I'd like to request to withdraw item number twenty-seven from the consent agenda. Mr. Colligan has withdrawn his application to serve as my alternate on the RTC and I'll be finding another candidate.
Okay, so that will be withdrawn, okay? Any, anything else?
There's just a few comments. Item twenty-six, I want to thank D'Amico Collins for volunteering to serve on the Civil Service Commission. And item thirty, Michael Laimbach for volunteering to serve on the Commission on Disabilities. Item number thirty-two, the Auto Theft Reduction Task Force. I have heard from a number of constituents that they're having their catalytic converters stolen, particularly off of Priuses, so I was glad to see this item on the agenda approving funding for the Auto Theft Reduction Task Force. On item forty-one, approving the grant applications for the farm park in Shana Clear Park. I've heard significant concerns from constituents about not just building new parks but maintaining our parks, making sure that we have sufficient budget to do that. The Parks Director has assured me that the, we will have budget to maintain these parks once created. So I'm glad to hear that. And on item forty-nine, the right-of-way agreements or right-of-entry agreements that will enable access to the rail corridor for our public work staff to begin pre-construction work. I have had assurances from the Executive Director of the RTC that that is really just, is simply enabling necessary pre-construction construction work such as geotechnical analysis. I know it would be necessary for whatever kind of infrastructure we build on the corridor.
Right. Very good. Thank you. Supervisor Friend?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. A couple of brief items. On item twenty-eight, I'd like to thank my colleague Supervisor Coonerty for taking the lead on this item. I'll let him speak more to it, but there's a lot of affordable housing funding coming from private trusts as well as from private companies over the hill, but some of that isn't really making its way or none of it is making its way over to our side. And so this is a letter to try and encourage participation over to the Santa Cruz County area as well. On item forty-four, which is funding regarding Aptos Creek Road or specifically the signalization, the synchronization of the, of the lights between Trout Gulch and all the way to State Park. I just wanted to thank Public Works for, with everything else going on, working with our office to get that application into the airboard. Four hundred thousand is a a lot of money to help that area out for synchronization. We've also been working in the first district as well to improve some of that synchronization. These really can make a big difference in ensuring traffic flow. So thank you to Public Works. On item forty-nine, I'm gonna have to recuse from that item. I live within five hundred feet of the rail line, my principal residence, and so I have a financial conflict and will need to recuse from item forty-nine. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you. Supervisor Coonerty?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Just a couple of comments today. First, on item number twenty, I want to thank the Parks Department for working to create some after-school programs for parents who are, you know, trying to manage jobs and, and teach, and homeschools and everything else. And so I'm hopeful that these efforts relieve a little bit of burden and provide some good activity for kids who are in need of it. Item number twenty-one, I want to say, thank Sam La4ty and the Cannabis Licensing Office. They have really stepped up and done both a great job in approving permits and in doing enforcement. And it was a big challenge. We put it on their desk and I appreciate that they were able to respond so effectively and to the benefit of our community. And finally, on item number twenty-eight, as Supervisor Friend mentioned, you have some large companies that are trying to fund affordable housing as, as, you know, their industries have essentially contributed to some of the affordability challenges in our area. And I think it's important that, that we start the conversation by reminding them that we are here, we are certainly impacted by the housing market in the Bay Area and that if, that by leveraging some of these dollars for some existing projects, we're gonna be able to create some good affordable housing in our community. Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you. Supervisor Catherine?
Yes, thank you. Quick note on the fairgrounds for the animals, for the evacuation area. The, the fairgrounds is always open for emergency situations, so I'm glad we cleared that up. PG&E, that's correct. They are out there, they're renting space for a staging area when they are parking their trucks. They have many trucks out there. But they're still, they're not, they're not in the area where the animals would go. Okay, item twenty-nine, I want to welcome Vanessa Kidos Carter as the fourth district appointee to the Women's Commission. And as Supervisor Coonick, welcomed the appointment of Michael Limbach as the fourth district appointee to the Commission on Disabilities. And then I want to make a quick comment on item number forty-one. It's good to see us that we are trying to get statewide park development and community revitalization programs. We're looking for grants and that'll really help out South County if we can get a little money down here in the South County also. And that's pretty much it. And I guess we're gonna vote on everything. And is item twenty-seven gonna be polled? Which would be the request of Supervisor Coonick?
Yes.
It will be polled. Okay. That'll be great.
Okay, I'd like to make a couple of comments. Mr. Supervisor Coonerty mentioned the coronavirus funding on item number twenty. I want to thank all the departments for coordinating our efforts to spend twenty point seven, twenty-seven point seven million dollars. Our, our response to the pandemic has been, from our local people, has been nothing short of amazing to me. We've got, we have different directions every twenty-four hours, it seems, from the state to the state and what's in and what's out. But the adjustment that people have made has been just fantastic. And I really want to thank everyone for making the effort, the extra effort to make this work as best we can. I am concerned about the certainty of our future support. There's a strong agreement among some lawmakers to provide direct support for local governments. We hope that happens, but until we get the funding to provide these services, it jeopardizes our responsibility as a county to respond. I would like to give some additional direction for the staff on the strategy for how to spend the estimated, I think it's three point six million in community sport, support and equity grants portion for future funding. I think that should return to the board for discussion before the contracts are proposed. That would go along with item number twenty. The supervisor, item number twenty-one, also Supervisor Coonerty mentioned about the Cannabis Licensee Office. I was glad to see that we made some changes last year that are bearing some fruit of a high number of licenses in the industry that we have now on record. I think that, I do think though that we should revisit the revenue projections we have for twenty twenty, this year, this next fiscal year, twenty-one, twenty-two. Historically, we've missed the projections for licenses and fees. And I'd like to perhaps as part of the solution, make revenue targets more realistic. I just want to say that I think we should give a closer look on our estimates of revenues because we haven't hit the targets and I'm not sure we, we will if they're put too high again. So I'd just like to revisit that or certainly have more discussion on that when we, we can get a more predictable pattern over the next several years. Item number twenty-eight, the affordable housing tech companies, it's all part of our housing crisis, meaning our housing crisis here. We have a lot of people going over the hill or have, have been previously to work in Silicon Valley companies. I think it would be proper for them to consider helping us. I think there's thirty thousand cars a day that go over there on the commute period. So I think the tech industry, it's impacted the affordability and availability of our homes here in Santa Cruz County. So I would, I really appreciate their taking a look at that and trying to get the Silicon Valley to pay more attention to us. Item forty-two on the donation to the parks. I want to thank the community members of our own General Services Department for the contributions it made to our Parks Department. It's been a wonderful thing to see the investment in our programs and facilities at a time when they're needed and most people need to get out as much as they can. And the, item number forty-five, again, this is on resurfacing, road resurfacing projects, Public Works for this. I want to thank them for their update and again to the, the voters who passed by more than two-thirds of Measure D in two thousand and sixteen. We're making a lot of progress on the road repair section of Measure D and I think it's just critical that we, we recognize that. With that, I would entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda as amended. And Mr. Plast, just does that include fifty-three point one or is that on the regular agenda then?
That includes item fifty-three point one.
Okay, just to be clear. Okay.
The consent agenda has amended.
I'll second that.
Coonerty and Catherine, please call the roll.
Supervisor Coonick?
Aye.
Friend? Supervisor Friend? Coonerty?
Aye.
Catherine?
Aye.
Chair McPherson?
Aye. Consent agenda is approved as amended. Now we will go to the regular agenda, item number seven, for a report, an update. We have an annual update from the Metropolitan Transit District or Metro. Alex Clifford will be making a presentation, but as a member of Metro, as I have been for years, I just want to thank them for the cooperative effort that they have had with the Regional Transportation Commission in the recent years. It's been really great and very, very important and really some great results coming from that cooperative effort with the RTC. I'd also like to mention, and I think Mr. Clifford will be saying something about it. We have two big projects that are in the critical final stages or getting to those final stages of our community transportation that'll meet our transportation as well as our climate goals. One is the downtown station, rebuilding of the downtown station as well as the Paratransit Center at the SoCal Avenue Project across from Dominican Hospital. Also Bus on Shoulder, which we'll be hearing about, is critically important to help us in our commute times, reducing those commute times. And I really, our investment in our transit system is critical for many reasons, but not the least of which are the climate factors that will be mentioned, I'm sure, and the equity goals. So I'm really happy to introduce Mr. Alex Clifford, the CEO of Transit District, to give us his annual report on Santa Cruz Metro.
Thank you much, Chair McPherson and Board of Supervisors and CAO Palacios. I appreciate the invitation to present to the state of Metro on an annual basis. Let me just ask, am I gonna share my screen or will the CTV people be bringing that up?
You will be sharing your screen. You will be sharing your screen.
Okay, let me go ahead and bring that up then. And you can see that. And then please do let me know if for some reason my slides are not advancing. I noticed something in a recent presentation where they weren't advancing. So again, I'd like to present the State of Metro and integrate into that a COVID update.
I'm sorry, if I could interrupt you before you start, if you could, up in the left hand corner, up top, hit the play and that way it will show each slide individually. There you go. Thank you.
Does that look a little bit better?
Yes, thank you.
Thank you. Sorry about that. I should be getting better at this by now. Yeah, so this is a little bit different presentation than than normal, but this hasn't been a normal year in twenty twenty and flowing into twenty twenty one. And hopefully that advanced. So what does transit look like in this hopefully upcoming post-COVID environment? The struggle is that nobody really knows. We certainly have more questions than answers. There is not much history to draw from. We know a little bit about challenges in economic recovery from the Great Recession, which generally lasted from about two thousand eight to twenty fourteen. But certainly that was not the same as what we're experiencing with COVID. But it can tell, it can give, be an indicator of how long you can encounter an economic downturn. In two thousand nine, there was the swine flu that that was a pandemic, but it never got this bad. So we didn't learn a lot from that, nor did we from the two thousand five avian flu. But certainly we did learn a little bit about sanitizing techniques. And we were able to draw from that experience soon after the new year in twenty twenty to actually begin preparing for the arrival of COVID in our county by starting to bring aboard disinfecting products. So what do we want to do? We want to always do the right thing, of course. You do, we do. We want to protect our customers and our employees. We want to take great care for the public trust, thoughtfulness, doing the right thing and trying to avoid costly mistakes. And as, as we have experienced since probably about March of twenty twenty, we think we're making some of the best decisions by participating in various state and national forums with fellow transit agency CEOs and various webinars to share experiences, things that work, things that didn't work, and to help each other integrate into our systems, things that, that other agencies have proven work and avoid costly mistakes. So Metro's initial, initial strategy is sort of divided into three phases. One is to restore the public and customer confidence in a safe experience when riding our bus. We're, in order to attract people back, we think we need to also look at adding value. And then we're spending a great deal of time thinking about what does the post-COVID transit service look like? So phase one, restoring the public confidence. So we joined APTA's Health and Safety Pledge. And this is a pledge of certain things we will do to help keep our customers and our bus operators safe and certain expectations that we have of our customers. These logos and of our, a representation of our commitment to safety have been placed on all of our buses and various collateral provided to us by APTA have also been placed on our buses. And then you've probably noticed, as you see the buses going down the street, that these, a number of our advertising spaces on our buses, the sides and the rear back of the buses, have been replaced with these messages deliberately disinfecting, seriously sanitizing and serious about safety. Again, we're trying to communicate a message to our customers. Come on back. Our ridership is down, way down, and I'll talk about that in a few moments. But we really want to invite our riders back to the extent that they can come back and use the service. And we want them to feel good about it and how safe it will be. So with that, one of the things that we did to protect our customers is we blocked off seats within our buses so that we can create physical distancing. And we also installed these clear plastic between row sneeze barriers. So if by chance you have somebody sitting behind you, you will, you will have this barrier between them and potentially any airborne droplets. We did this on a hundred percent of our buses. I know of no other transit agency across the nation that I've heard of yet that's done anything like this. There is no over the counter product. And we have great talent in our maintenance, maintenance group. And they were able to customize every bus, every one of these clear plastic between road dividers. In addition to that, we, every night when the buses come into the facility to be fueled, we have, we have somebody that has an electrostatic fogger, as you see on the left, that is spraying disinfectant throughout the bus, all the high touch surfaces, the seats, the seat backs, the stanchions. So every bus that comes through the facility to be fueled gets disinfected each night. On the right, you'll see that we've added hand sanitizer dispensers to all of our buses. So as the customer boards the bus, they can, they can dispense some hand sanitizer and as, as they're paying their fare. And then we did something a little bit different, sort of taking a page out of something that you have seen over the years, maybe in riding trains. We hired some temporary employees and stationed them at our various transit centers, Watsonville, Capitola, Scotts Valley and downtown Santa Cruz. And every time a bus comes into that facility, these folks jump on the bus. They have a bucket of hand sanitizer, I'm sorry, a bucket of sanitizer. They dip a rag into it and then they jump onto the bus and they quickly sanitize all the high touch surfaces, the hand straps, the stanchions, the back of the seats. Before that bus pulls out back into service, a bus may arrive. It may be there for a minute. It may be there for ten minutes. So these folks have to work pretty fast. What does that do? Well, it tries to address the obvious. A bus every night gets sanitized. It leaves the shop the next morning sanitized. But the moment we start boarding passengers and they're touching surfaces, we can no longer make that claim. So the nice thing about our system is our, our buses all go through these various transit centers multiple times throughout the day. And so they're getting this additional disinfecting multiple times throughout the day. So it's a real nice added feature again to help our customers feel safe on our buses. And then for our bus operators, for a while after COVID hit in this county, in order to protect our bus operators and still be able to provide service, we discontinued front door boarding and we went free fares for a brief period of time. While we took safety measures to protect our bus operators. So again, there are no over the counter products for something like this. Our talented people in our, our fleet maintenance facility constructed for every bus, all customized, these clear curtains. And what a bus operator does is each time they pull up to a bus stop, they deploy the curtain to protect themselves from airborne droplets that may be dispensed by customers boarding the bus. And so once we completed this retrofit of a hundred percent of our fleet, we started boarding again at the front door and collecting fares again. And then in addition, as you all know, the county mandated several months ago that people wear face coverings and they were very specific in their, or the county health officer was very specific in her order that people waiting at bus stops, people boarding buses, people riding buses and bus operators must wear a face covering. So we have, we've put together these notices to our customers, they're on the buses. And we have empowered all of our bus operators to refuse rides. If somebody tries to board that bus without a face covering, that operator can refuse the ride. If they get any pushback, that operator will radio dispatch. Dispatch will either send the supervisor or call, call the police or the sheriff to come help us out. So we're very serious about that. And then sometimes we experience customers who board with a face covering properly donned. But then when they're sitting in their seat, they take their face covering off. If the operator witnesses that, again, they're empowered to pull the bus over, ask that person to properly wear their face covering. If they do not, they follow the same procedure I described earlier. So again, we're very serious about keeping our customers safe and our bus operators safe. So then along about October, we thought, well, you know, things, this is before Halloween, if you will. We thought things were getting significantly better. Remember our, our county moved to, through the, the state recovery color coding to one of the better designations. And so we put together a big press event and said, hey, you know, come on back. Look at all the things that we've done. We celebrated the things that I've described to you today. Come on back, ride the bus. You know, if you, if your job has returned and you need to get to work, you need our service, ride our bus. If you need to go to the grocery store, the doctor's appointment, ride our bus. We're providing you a safe experience. So then phase two added value, which is an overlapping phase which we are in today. The talk today, no matter where you are at, is contactless, touchless, anything and everything. And so we're looking at that too. Now, we've always been contactless, touchless to the extent that our customers have used our smart card. They can load value on that smart card, whether that be cash or transit passes. And, and they can bring it near the fare box and, and it'll electronically debit that card or acknowledge that it has a fare on it. So we've always had that. So we've made a big push to our customers. Please, to the extent you can, move away from paper fare media, cash and coin. Move to contactless, touchless. In addition to that, in October, we launched our first smartphone application, the Splash Pass. And we're migrating customers system wide. Originally, that was going to be a pilot project for just Highway seventeen. But because of COVID, we, we advanced that to a system wide launch. We're also investigating a proposal we hope to bring to our board sometime soon to expand Wi-Fi. We have Wi-Fi today available to our customers on Highway seventeen commuter buses, but we do not on the rest of the fixed route system. We think it would be great added value to extend that. The new technology for the automated vehicle location system that we're currently installing on our buses has that feature to be turned on. There is a cost. We will ask the board if they will approve that as soon as we accept that automated vehicle location product being installed on our buses. In addition to that, early this year, we hope to bring a proposal to the board to install automatic passenger counters on our buses. Now, these, you know, before COVID were something that we were thinking about because we like data. We like to be able to plan a system around data. We don't like anecdotal planning. And passenger counters tell us a lot about where people get on and off, and we can better plan our service. The neat feature about this with the smartphone application is that once we launch this, if the board approves it, the customer will be able to see on their smartphone application how many people are on that approaching bus. And if they are uncomfortable with the number of people on that approaching bus, then when the bus arrives, they can wave it on by and wait for the next bus. We're giving the customer the opportunity to make a decision on their own about their comfort level relative to the number of people on that bus. The board has approved redesign of our bus stops. They're going to get much smarter and much nicer looking. We've also added kiosks at Watsonville and Santa Cruz Transit Centers. Since we've closed down our customer service, customer facing window at those two locations because of COVID, we, we added this feature so that people can, in effect, push a button, much, much like, if you will, a ring doorbell. And it has a camera and the customer service will see that customer and be able to interact in real time with that customer. And then we talked about automatic vehicle location predictive arrival. That's currently in the process of being installed on our buses. Going on to the next slide. So phase three is the post-COVID. And again, we're spending a lot of time thinking about what that looks like. We're evaluating, actually, we, we brought a proposal to the board this month for on demand service that's been delayed to be further discussed at the board's meeting in February. But that would create basically six microtransit districts near existing fixed routes in which we would do a kind of a door to door service. This is a pilot project we're proposing. And then as much as financially feasible, we're trying to restore service levels to pre-COVID levels. This is important. When the customers need to use our service, when their job returns or they need to go to the doctor, dentist, grocery store, that service needs to be there for them. If it is not, if we, if we cut service too much and it's not there, they'll find other ways to do their business. Or they may, they may actually, if they're transit dependent and, and we're not available, they may not have a job to go back to because they can't get to the job. So it's important for us to have the service there when they need us as opposed to the, the alternate philosophy, which is wait until the demand is there and then put the service there. We don't agree with that. We think it needs to be there, even if we're running some empty buses for, for a while, while we come through the phases of recovery. Customers have told us through a post-COVID survey that, that as, as they return, they expect better frequency on certain routes. So we're paying attention to analyzing that. We need to do better with on time performance. Today, on time performance has been very anecdotal, some minor sampling with a human being going out there and sampling ridership on buses and also our on time performance on buses. When we get these two products that I talked to you about earlier, the automatic vehicle location and the passenger counters, we'll be able to move into an environment where we plan our service and hold our service accountable by real data. That'll allow us between service changes to better plan route timing and, and produce a bus service that operates more on time. Customers demand that. We're going to do better in that respect. We're thinking, we're rethinking the role and functionality and layout of transit centers. Don't have an answer there yet, but we're rethinking that. We're also rethinking the future of ticket vending machines, paper fare media, cash and coins. And then as Supervisor McPherson alluded to earlier, we think Bus on Shoulder is a real nice added value for our customers. Working closely with the RTC to get that in place in a couple of years. And that hopefully will allow us to engage some new express service. Maybe we'll call it Bus Rapid Transit, B R T, who knows? To get passengers, customers from South County to North County to work in a very quicker way. I talked a little bit earlier about ridership being down. It is, it is down significantly. This chart shows that ridership through about middle of, of December. And it, as you can tell, we've gone through a bit of a roller coaster ride. And when the governor issued the stay home order, ridership plummeted again. Now, in the last couple of weeks, ridership has started to come back up a little bit. We hope that that will continue, but it is, it is far and away below what it should be. For example, on this slide, it shows that it's at about fourteen thousand trips, you know, in that particular week in December. And that same time last year, it should have been at about fifty three thousand trips. So we are way off our mark, but still, we like to see this going in the right direction. The yellow line simply tells you how many people were passing up because we capacity constrain our buses. We only allow, for example, fifteen people maximum on a, on a forty foot bus. That results in us having to pass people up occasionally because our bus is full. So we track that so that we can make adjustments in our service as needed. Should we notice that we're passing up more people? There are too many people. We prefer to pass up nobody, quite frankly. So moving on to the state of our budget, a little bit briefly, a couple of notes there. As of December thirty first, like you, our revenues are down. In our case, we're down about one point three million in revenues. That certainly is dominated by passenger fares. Since our ridership is down about eighty five percent, there too means your, your revenues are going to be down. Also, we're not receiving the payments we would have otherwise received from UCSC, for example, because their students are not doing in-person classes and they don't need the level of service they normally have. Now, the good news is we've been managing with a microscope our expenses. And we've been able to manage our expenses down, saving about three point two million dollars through the first half of our fiscal year. So net, net, we're at a favorable one point eight million dollars. We need to continue to do that because we don't know how long it's going to take to recover from what's going on right now. Now, the, the state of the congressional funding, you, you all know that the Consolidated Appropriations Act of twenty twenty one was signed by the president. It's an omnibus bill. That simply means multiple things are going on, budget, Corona relief, other things are going on all at the same time and they all pass. And they all pass with one vote and they all get signed by one signature. Within that omnibus bill, there was the Emergency Corona Relief Act that now has another term. Congress is really good at starting out with various terms and abbreviations and acronyms. And then later on, they end up changing it and they did it again today. And so the newest acronym or abbreviation is CHRSAA. And then there was also the federal budget that was adopted. Now, those both have important things to us, which I'll tell you about here shortly. So in the COVID stimulus dollars, what was at the time when this slide was drafted called the ECRA. And we, we would be allocated through their formula programs. At this time, we thought 12 million. Actually, we know that number a little better today. It's closer to about thirteen point five million. This is similar to the CARES Act. And the CARES Act, we were allocated transit emergency funding to the tune of about 20 million dollars. So these two funds combined become a reserve that we will use to try to survive the, the economic downturn. And we're desperately trying to do everything possible to avoid furloughs and layoffs at our organizations. So far, we have not had to do that, only because Congress stepped up in the CARES Act and now in this latest, a Corona relief allocation, specifically to help transit survive and, and to help us avoid layoffs and furloughs. So we've taken that to heart. And what will happen is in the coming months, as we go through the economic roller coaster ride, in those months in which we don't have enough revenues to pay all our bills, we'll draw down on these funds to bridge that gap in order to avoid layoffs and furloughs and major service cuts. We hope that by the time we run out of this money, that the economy has recovered and things are back to some semblance of posts of pre-COVID funding and ridership and, and expenses. But we don't know. And to that end, we will also hope that the federal government will monitor this closely and create additional Corona relief emergency funding for us. And then in the budget side, we have something called our, our transit authorization. That's included in the budget. We also receive some money annually because we operate compressed natural gas buses. It's an alternative fuel tax credit. It's an extender which requires Congress to renew it annually. That gives us about $300,000 that we'll use in our capital program. And then the, the FAST Act, which is again, our transit authorization, funds in law, appropriates in law, a, a certain baseline of funding for transit agencies across the nation. And in the last couple of years, including in 2021 funding cycle, Congress plus up. They gave us more than the minimum, which was 198 million nationwide. To our agency, that'll be about 205,000 additional dollars. And then they also did plus-ups in the, in the capital programs, bus and bus facilities and Lono. In 2016, we got a Lono grant to buy three electric buses. And we hope to go for a Lono grant probably in 2022 or 2023. This year, we'll be going for a bus and bus facilities grant to build a new para-transit facility over near Dominican. So this plus-up should help better our chances, we hope, of, of receiving that grant. And then I'd just like to close with our slide. All Santa Cruz Metro dedicated employees are frontline heroes delivering essential services. Mr. Chair, I'm happy to entertain any questions. Sorry, Mr. Chair, you're muted.
Thank you, Mr. Clifford, for that detailed explanation. Transportation is a critical component of our lifestyle around here. And you've been able to adjust to an eighty-five percent downturn in ridership through no fault of Metro's doing. But I, along with Supervisor Cooney, do sit on the Metro Board of Directors. Do I have any questions from the, the board supervisors, Mr. Cooney?
No questions. I just wanted to thank Director Clifford for the presentation and, and say I'm particularly excited about the automatic passenger counters and vehicle locators. I think those, having that additional data is going to be crucial for, as you said, bringing back the service in a way that is efficient as possible and meets the demands of customers as best as possible. So really excited to see those technological updates. Thanks.
Thank you.
Supervisor Friend, any comments?
No, Chair, I don't, I don't have any questions. I just have a brief comment. Thank you, Mr. Clifford, as always, for this presentation. And I know that the district has considered sort of on-demand, on-demand and ride-sharing options previously. And so I do look forward to hearing more about that as, as the time moves on. And one thing that the district may want to, may want to consider is, is actually doing sort of an annual state of the district, the metro district kind of presentation. You do have events. I know that you invite everybody to, but maybe this, this kind of presentation seems like it could be done well as a metro sort of countywide thing, where you invite all the various city councils and stuff to participate in. But thank you.
Supervisor Cooney, any questions, comments?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I don't have any questions. I agree with Supervisor Cooney about the importance of the real-time data and the efficiencies and, you know, better quality of service that we'll be able to provide our riders. And so I look forward to seeing that come forward. Thank you.
Thank you. Supervisor Capit?
Thank you. Want to thank Mr. Clifford for the presentation. And I, I know on the 91X, I've used that before. Is, is that still running? I, I know in the summer, sometimes it's not running because Cabrillo's not in session. But right now, with Cabrillo's enrollment down and ridership down all over, is 91X still running at all?
It is still running. We've made some adjustments to service, obviously, to try to respond to what level of service we can provide and match that to where the riders are. But yeah, we're, we're still getting a decent amount of South County to North County commutes.
Yeah, but thanks. Thank you.
Okay, I, I'd just like to close in saying, you know, thank you from the board comments. Thank you for your efforts in adjusting to these crises that we faced from coronavirus to virus to whatever it may be. Thank you. I think Metro is ready to serve and do a better service in the future when we get back on track with reality or what it used to be like. So thank you very much. Are there any comments from the public?
Yes, Chair, we have some speakers that are wanting to talk. The first person is, actually, if before we call them, if you will give me a second, I will share my screen and put the timer up. Okay. Our first speaker is Monica McGuire. You have two minutes to speak. I am unmuting you. Please accept the unmute and start speaking. The timer will begin when you start.
Hello, it's Monica McGuire. Can you hear me?
Yes.
So, Mr. Clifford, I, I'm wondering, would you please, right now, give full answers to the questions often asked throughout the year by the public? Even if you've done them that at other meetings, the public is not present at every meeting. And one of the ones that has come up a lot this year is, are you employing buying smaller vehicles for the low ridership? And can you give any details about that choice, however you have made it? Since I know that question's been brought up quite a bit. And the adjunct need, of course, there is that smaller buses could actually allow for the rider and driver hours as options where they would go mask-free. That you could offer mask-free hours for the lower of the population that would like that. Anyone who would actually ask the public our opinion would find out that a full third of the people who are wearing masks at work already suddenly sixty-eight hours a day and don't want to be wearing it, the extra, plus all the people who would be riding buses but cannot now because we can't wear masks. And it's better if you offer the ability for people who can't wear masks to be matched up with drivers who can't wear masks and/or are willing to not wear them because of knowing that it's so much healthier to exchange healthy bacteria. And we've already tested our bodies so extensively with less touch, less shared breathing, less everything, so that they'd be better off if they had that option as well. So we, we answer those questions and/or put it on the agenda for a future meeting as is supposed to happen when public ask questions like this. Thank you so much. We appreciate hearing.
Okay, Mr. Clifford, if I may, if we could answer, if you could answer those questions at the next Metro Board meeting, I think that'd be the proper place to do it. Caller, please.
Thank you. Next caller is a person who's calling in on the telephone. Your number is private, so I can't call your number out. If you have a private number and you are wanting to speak, now is your time. You have two minutes. I am unmuting you. Please accept the unmute and start speaking. The timer will begin when you start.
Hello, this is Marilyn Garrett. I used to ride the bus a lot. Now that we've been conditioned to think everyone's a biohazard and you have to be a certain distance apart, people are afraid to go out. I, what's happening, I think it's pretty obvious, is that anything that benefits the, the public is, and small businesses are being destroyed by these policies. And when you have policies of lockdown and restrictions, this is the predictable consequence, destruction and destruction of any type of representative government. That's where we're heading. Also, when I heard Mr. Clifford talk about automated counters, that's putting people out of work, real-time data, I learned that this automatic vehicle location involves frequencies of microwaves connecting to the 4G Verizon antennas. That SAC friend saw that there were thirteen of these in a square mile in Aptos. So as the bus goes along, the frequencies that are dangerous, biologically harmful, are kicking in. And this, people on computers and Wi-Fi, it's more and more damaging microwave radiation. So it's very disturbing, very unhealthy. And while you ooh and ah over real-time data and vehicle location, you're...
Thank you. The next person is also a caller. If your number ends in 2915, you have two minutes to speak. I'm unmuting you. Please accept the unmute and start speaking. The timer will begin when you start.
Good morning, this is Becky Steinbruner. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Thank you. I, I want to just point out that the paid ads on the sides of buses was a source of, of revenue for Metro. And I really think that, that the ad should be reinstated to bring in money for Metro. People really aren't going to pay attention to a sign on a bus saying it's safe. What they really need to hear is some of this information that Mr. Clifford has put out, like the people who jump on and, and quickly sanitize things. That's what will build confidence and trust in building up the ridership. So I encourage those paid ads to come back to help with the budget problems. I also am opposed to putting Wi-Fi onto the fixed route system. There are many people who, like Ms. Garrett and myself, are EMF sensitive. There are many people in this community that are and that would use the bus, but would not use the bus if there's Wi-Fi fixed on the bus. As Ms. Garrett said, there are plenty of, of nodes along the routes where people can and do use their Wi-Fi devices. So please do not do that. That is a violation of the American Disabilities Act, and I am opposed to doing it. Regarding full buses having to pass up passengers when Metro is aware of that, why not put in a follow-up bus? So that those people who are being passed up will, within five minutes, ten minutes, get another bus coming along with assurance. That will also increase your ridership. Because if people are passed up repeatedly, they're going to stop trying to use the bus. I also want to take an exception to your claim that you did not lay off anyone. You did, in fact, lay off Mr. John Doughty because of...
Thank you. And Chair McPherson, that is the last public comment.
Okay, I don't think we need any, any action on this. The next, I'd like to just mention that the next board being of Metro is Friday, February twenty-sixth at nine AM. And it'll be a virtual meeting. So it's February twenty-sixth at nine AM if people have any questions that they might want to bring to Metro. Again, Mr. Clifford, thank you for your presentation and for Metro's adjustment to the ongoing circumstances that we have. We will now go on to item number eight. That is a public hearing to... Notes here will spread all over the place. Sorry about that. This is a public hearing to consider accepting the Coastal Commission modifications. Ordinance number fifty-three forty-five relating to County Code Section thirteen ten point six nine four regarding vacation rentals. Adopt a resolution accepting the commission's modifications. Adopt ordinance based on the modifications and take other actions as outlined in the memorandum of the planning director. We have a resolution of acceptance of the CCC amendments to thirteen ten six forty-nine ninety-four, D two A, and Exhibit A, ordinance amending SCC thirteen ten six ninety-four with CCC modifications, amendments to thirteen ten six ninety-four CCC modification. There's a strikeout underlying the CCC report, staff report, the CCC staff, staff report addendum, and the CC hearing correspondence. It's included in the county letter. Do we have a presentation or like to open the public hearing? And who will be presenting?
Good morning, Chair McPherson. This is Jocelyn Drake.
Jocelyn, yes, thank you.
Good morning. It sounds like you can hear me.
Yes, we can. Thank you.
Good morning. Good morning, Chair McPherson and supervisors. I'm Jocelyn Drake, the principal planner with the planning department. This morning's hearing is to request that the board accept the California Coastal Commission's modifications to the county's recently passed ordinance on vacation rentals. As you'll recall, back on September first, 2020, the board passed Ordinance fifty-three forty-five amending the vacation rental provisions in Chapter thirteen ten of the Santa Cruz County Code. And those amendments adopted by the board include, included lowering the caps in the designated areas and strengthening the code enforcement provisions. Chapter, County Code, Chapter thirteen ten implements the county's local coastal program and therefore the amendments must be approved by the Coastal Commission. So just recently, on January thirteenth, 2021, the Coastal Commission held a public hearing and they agreed that the amendments are in conformance with the county's local coastal program. And they do implement the California Coastal Act. However, they took exception to one proposed amendment. The commission, the Coastal Commission found that the numerical cap adopted by the board for the live oak designated area, or also known as the Loda, does not reflect the current stabilized market in that the board adopted cap reduced the number of permits permitted in the Loda below the number of permits currently issued in the Loda. So as the board may recall, the, the adopted cap by the board was two hundred, two hundred and twenty vacation rentals and eighteen hosted rentals for a total of two hundred and thirty-eight short-term rental permits. The Coastal Commission reviewed that proposed cap and they felt that a revised cap of two hundred and sixty-two vacation rental permits and eighteen hosted rental permits for two hun, for a total of two hundred and eighty short-term rental permits was more appropriate. They felt this because the cap, the amended cap, the revised cap of two hundred and eighty reflects the current number of permits issued in the Loda. They also included an additional nine permit allocations for, to allow for processing of applications that were placed on hold due to the moratorium last summer. So I just wanted to point out that this numerical cap, even revised at two hundred and eighty, would still allow fewer permits than the existing percentage-based cap that is currently in effect in the Loda. That fifteen percent that we started with and as reflected in the current code. That fifteen percent that we started with and as reflected in the current code. Um, so that is the recommendation, and so staff is asking that the board conduct a public hearing and accept these modifications with passage of a resolution transmitting the acceptance to the Coastal Commission and a new ordinance that incorporates these changes, which is the one change that I mentioned, the change to the cap in the LOTA. As required by law, acceptance of the amendments will return to the Coastal Commission for approval before going into effect. And I'm available to answer any questions, and we also have the planning director with us here today as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Jocelyn, for that presentation. Um, are there any comments from the board before we open the public hearing? I see any hand, I don't see any hands raised. Okay, we will open this to the public. Are there any comments, uh, from the public?
Yes, Chair, it looks like we do have a couple of comments. If you give me one second, I will share my screen. Okay. Apologize. Okay. Our first person to speak is Joe Hall. You are being requested to be unmuted. You will have two minutes to speak. Once you start, the timer will begin when you start.
Hello and good morning. Uh, my name is Joe Hall. I'm a resident of Live Oak, referred to in your staff report as the LOTA. Uh, thank you for approving the count of vacation rental ordinance nine years ago. It's made a big change in our neighborhood, and most recently, the step, the board took a big step forward to reduce the cap on vacation rentals. We've had nine years of experience, and we know what vacation rentals do in our neighborhood. What the cap recognized was the time it takes to enforce permit conditions on vacation rentals in residential neighborhoods. They are basically businesses, and their goal is to maximize return, while neighborhoods' goal is for people to live in. One comment from the Coastal Commission staff I thought was interesting. It was mentioned that the market for vacation rentals is stabilized. Well, the reason it's stabilized was the county passed the vacation rental ordinance. Otherwise, there'd be a lot more in our neighborhood. The ordinance succeeded in that respect. During a discussion by the Coastal Commission members, an idea was put forth by a member of the commission, and that idea was that instead of lowering the number, maybe shift more of them into hosted vacation rentals, which are managed by the owners, and we've had very few problems with. I would hope your board would direct the planning department to consider a future amendment to the vacation rental ordinance to bring forth a new proposed cap of two twenty, which you previously approved, and increase the number of hosted vacation rentals by a similar number. This allows the Coastal Commission access, but helps neighborhoods have, uh, less party houses because many of the bigger homes, that's what they end up. There's really no other way to describe it. So anyhow, in closing, I would hope you would continue to look at putting a numerical cap that's lower. You can enforce it. People can live with it. We're not asking to do away with it. We're asking to something that can be more successfully managed in the neighborhoods. Thank you so much, and thank you for considering this.
Thank you.
Thank you. The next, um, person to speak is a telephone caller. If your number ends in two nine one five, you have two minutes to speak. I am unmuting you. Please accept the unmute and start speaking. The timer will begin when you start.
Thank you. This is Becky Steinbruner. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Thank you. I was quite surprised to see that the Coastal Commission would, um, demand a higher number of housing stock be taken out of, be removed from housing stock and put into, um, essentially a business, a commercial business within the residential area. I, I, I oppose this in all areas, but am curious why they singled out the Live Oak area, which had a cap, but the Davenport area also has a lower number. Why was that, that area not addressed? Um, uh, this makes no sense to me, and I, I support what Mr. Hall said, that, uh, using the hosted rental system would provide places for people to stay. We have plenty of hotels, even though many of them have been leased to the county for providing COVID homeless shelter. But there are plenty of hotels, and that's what needs to be supported with transient occupancy tax taxes in commercial areas and not bringing these party houses to our neighborhoods. So, um, please, I, I hope you do not support this because I think it's unacceptable and does a disservice to the Live Oak area. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Carol Behorn. But Jo, but I apologize. Bjorn? Bjorn? Behorn? I'm going to get your name right sooner or later. You will have two minutes to speak. I'm unmuting you. The timer will start when you start.
Uh, yes, thank you. This is Carol Behorn. Can you hear me?
Yes, thank you.
Awesome. Thank you. Um, so I want to echo the comments of Joe and Becky. Um, I am very surprised that the Coastal Commission came in with this higher number. And I agree. I think those rental units should be, um, more evenly distributed throughout other areas, not just concentrated in one area. Um, and, uh, and the bigger issue here too is, um, the Coastal Commission is an unelected body, and they're essentially changing an ordinance. So, um, I think we need to look really hard at that and make sure that the people of Santa Cruz that are paying the property taxes, that have elected the board of supervisors, that you all, um, represent us, even in the face of an unelected body such as the Coastal Commission. So that would be my, uh, recommendation or encouragement to you all is to really think about what your role is and how you are elected. Represent the people. Um, the Coastal Commission was not elected. And so if we, if you need to stand up for the people, I would highly encourage you to do that. I yield. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Crystal. You will have two minutes to speak. I'm unmuting you. Please accept the unmute and start speaking. The timer will begin when you start.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, thank you.
Perfect. My name is Crystal Cadilis. I'm a representative with Turnkey Vacation Rentals, and I actually just have a question for the board. Um, thank you for the presentation, and I was just hoping to get an idea. I know timelines are hard to pin down. I just have owners on my end that I represent waiting for some type of solution. So should this move forward today hypothetically, what can we see in timeline as far as permits being reissued, assuming they're in a zone that's not capped?
Okay, thank you. And Chair, that is the last public comment we have on this item.
Okay, uh, Jocelyn, there were some questions that you might be able to answer there.
Yeah. Um, the question that I noted was why the, um, cap was recommended to be raised in the LOTA by the California Coastal Commission, but not in the other two designated districts, um, which are, um, the Salzda and the Dazda, Davenport and the Seacliff Aptos area. And the reason why is because, um, back, um, last summer and fall, when the board adopted revised caps in the designated areas, the caps, um, the new lowered caps, they're all, they've all been lowered over what the, uh, percentage rate, um, cap is that's currently reflected in the, um, vacation rental ordinance is. However, in the Dazda and in the Salzda, um, the caps were lowered to reflect the existing number of permits in those designated areas. In the LOTA, the Live Oak area, the cap was actually lowered below the number of existing permits in the LOTA. So right now, as of a month ago, when, um, this went to the Coastal Commission, or a few weeks ago, um, the, uh, we had two hundred and fifty-three, uh, permits, vacation rental permits issued in the LOTA. So that is, um, significantly higher than the two hundred and twenty cap that the board adopted. And that was, that was intentional, um, to, to, um, with the idea be that over time through attrition as, um, vacation rental permits were, um, relinquished and, and weren't renewed, or properties changed ownership, that we would actually remove, a significant number of permits out of the pool of permit availability. And that is what the Coastal Commission had an issue with, is they felt that the current number of permits that are out there reflects the current stabilized market, and we should cap it at status quo.
Okay. I think that answers most of the questions, uh, that were, um, is there any other, there are no other comments from the public? Um, I will bring it back to the board for consideration.
I, I want to, um, repeat one of the questions, another question raised by the public, which I've received a number of times, which is, uh, if the board moves forward with this action, uh, as recommended today, what happens to the vacation rental moratorium?
Uh, the moratorium is lifted when the new ordinance goes into effect.
Great, thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions from the board members?
Supervisor McPherson, I'll make some brief comments. Uh, thank you for the opportunity. I, I think it's important to kind of reflect a little bit on the history here, um, as Mr. Hall noted, and he was a leader in our community for bringing this forward almost ten years ago. But the county went from a completely unregulated vacation rental market to a very, very, very controversial initial regulation of the market, to an expansion of those regulations to where we are today. And during that time, the Coastal Commission had made it very clear. Initially, they expressed concerns of any caps at all. After extensive negotiation, uh, there was agreement on these percentage caps, which, by the way, um, were still very controversial, both with, uh, some of the local property management associations and the Coastal Commission, but this was what the agreed-upon number was. Uh, there were some supervisors like myself that thought that those numbers were still too high. As time went on, uh, we continued to have two things happen. One, a conversion of homes that were used as long-term rentals, uh, both into vacation rentals and hosted rentals. And, and by the way, um, uh, planning department did do a survey of hosted rental owners and asked them how many had had long-term rentals before the conversion. And, and about one in five had said they had done a conversion. So there's an unequivocal, I think that's an under-reporting because that's a self-reporting. There's an unequivocal relationship between hosted rentals and the loss of affordable housing, long-term stock. There's an unequivocal relationship between whole-home rentals and the loss of long-term, uh, rental stock in our community. So the board decided, um, that we wanted to create additional regulations and restrictions. Additionally, it was very hard to revoke permits when there were problematic actors, which is disproportionately within Supervisor Conix District and my district, which are people that have had party homes. And the planning department, uh, really is hamstrung, uh, under the current guidelines for revocation, revocation of permits. There really isn't clarity on a process that enumerates how to revoke. What's proposed today and what the board approved, uh, are by far the strongest, uh, additional regulations that have been proposed since the creation of the ordinance nine years ago. It creates a very strong set of guidelines for revocation and expectation of behavior of those that own these properties. It caps it at a number that is significantly below what could still happen, uh, should the percentage caps continue to exist. I mean, for that matter, by a few hundred, when all said and done, at least within the first and second district of what could potentially grow in the fifteen percent, uh, to twenty percent numbers. And so I think that, and the Coastal Commission made it clear when our board took action back in September, based on community requests to lower the number beyond what is even currently, uh, existed in the first district, that they would not support such an action. I mean, they, they were unequivocal about this, and so it really wasn't surprising that a couple of weeks ago, they took the action that they had promised that they would take, which is that they didn't want to see a reduction. The fact that they were even willing to, to meet us, uh, to see the reduction of the cap as where it is, below a number that they had originally approved on a percentage that was below where they were comfortable being, I felt, uh, is a good sign of them working with us on this issue. Um, I would be concerned, by the way, of this compromise proposal of allowing for growth in hosted rentals because we know for a fact that it reduces, uh, the affordable housing stock, and many of those are used for long-term rentals. I recognize that they may be less problematic than the whole-home rentals, uh, but there's also that other trade-off of the loss of affordable housing. So, uh, that's a long, I, I apologize for the long speech. It's a long way of me just giving the history. I think it's important for us to recognize we've come a long way from unregulated to regulated, and this is a strong, strong, uh, ordinance that's before us. And as such, I'll move the recommended actions.
I have a second.
I'll, I'll second that.
Any, any other further comments? I really appreciate your summary, Mr. Friend, who's writing on really the reality of it all and what has taken place. Uh, these are as strict, I guess you would say, as, as we could, uh, we could have hoped for. And even more so than what the commissal, the Coastal Commission called for initially. So, uh, I appreciate your overall, uh, explanation of the process. Mr. Cooper, did you have a comment, uh, too, or, Mr.?
No, I, I, I share your appreciation, Supervisor Friend, summary and issues, and, you know, this is like many of the issues we work on, it's a balance of competing interests. And then it's also a balance of, uh, competing regulatory bodies. There's us and the Coastal Commission, uh, who have different mandates and different roles and responsibilities, and, you know, somewhere in there tends to be the compromise, and I also appreciate the fact that staff has continued, uh, to work with us to, and the community to iterate and improve on this, uh, ordinance to continue to address changing market conditions and changing uses and changing impacts.
Okay, thank you. I do not see any other further comment. Oh, excuse me, Supervisor, go ahead.
Thank you, Chair. Um, I just had, uh, one question, um, which is, you know, I, it doesn't sound today like there's any support for sending a revised ordinance back to the Coastal Commission. Um, but I did want, uh, you know, just clarification. If, if that were to happen, what would the process even be? And what kind of delays would we see in the implementation of any ordinance?
Um, I, I would have to check in with, um, with the planning director to see if she has any idea of how, what that would, what that would result in as far as delays. If you adopted a revised ordinance and we had to go back to the Coastal Commission. Um, Kathy, are you on the line?
Yes, I am. Um, what I would anticipate is that the Coastal Commission would request some, um, deeper level of market analysis of the visitor accommodation industry. And, you know, they would continue to have concerns about the market and overall access of, um, visitors to the coast to find appropriate accommodations. Um, at times, the Coastal Commission, I, I know not all vacation rentals are, um, considered, you know, lower priced than hotels, but some are, and in the past, the Coastal Commission have considered that, you know, uh, availability to increase the spectrum of cost accessibility to members of the public. So I think that it would, um, likely be, I mean, this, this ordinance, this effort has taken about a year. And I think if we were to start over and, and do another one, it would take, you know, six to nine months, most likely.
Got it. Thank you. Uh, one other question, which, um, you know, I've heard a lot of concerns about, um, enforcement to date. Um, you know, how many vacation rentals so far, um, you know, up to this point, under the old ordinance have, uh, have been shut down for illegal conduct in the county? Um, either because they violated the terms of an existing permit that they had or never actually got a permit?
Um, I don't have the figures on how many, um, code enforcement cases we've had related to folks, uh, operating, uh, rentals without the benefit of a permit, um, offhand. Um, when we do cite somebody who is operating without a permit, the resolution is to apply for a permit, and we've had permit availability up until the moratorium. So typically, people resolve that particular issue by getting a permit. Um, since I've been here the past four years, I'm not aware of us revoking a permit. However, we have heavily negotiated with permit holders to rectify the issues that, um, that have come to, to our attention because we haven't had the strongest, uh, violation, um, policies and regulations in the ordinance. Uh, we've kind of, you know, used sort of our softer skills to resolve as many issues as possible. Of course, there's the higher level issues that the sheriff takes care of, you know, noise violations, and he'll, they'll issue tickets and things like that. But for things that are, are in our realm, uh, we've usually been pretty successful, I would say, with the majority of applicant, or of, uh, folks out there who have been bad actors on sort of a more mid-level through, um, through, you know, talking to them, medi, uh, mediation, things like that. But with the revised ordinance, as you know, um, we have. we have some very strong language in our violation section, which will give us a lot more ability, greater ability to to find a reason to cite a rental operator for a significant violation. And we've laid out a process where two significant violations will require a public hearing for potential revocation and also will be grounds for denial of the renewal of an application. So I think that with these current revisions, you'll see a lot more enforceability moving forward.
Great, thank you, Ms. Drake. I'll just comment that, you know, of course, it's challenging coming in here. And of course, the only revision that the coastal, or amendment the Coastal Commission has sent back is in the district that I represent. And I feel like I'm really arriving at this point in the policymaking process where the cake has just come out of the oven and it's baked. So, you know, and I think, you know, we've, I know this has been a process and many of you have heard, you know, especially Supervisor Friend, about issues particularly related to enforcement. You know, as Mr. Drake said, we have never revoked a permit from any vacation rental holder, at least to her knowledge. And, you know, ultimately, we are going to have to make sure that we strike a balance, I mean, and enforce codes against bad actors who, you know, really give a bad name for vacation rentals in general. You know, I've heard from actually some vacation rental owners that they also did not feel adequately engaged in this process of revising the codes, that we never, that she never received notice that the county was updating these codes and didn't receive a notice from the Planning Department via, you know, her contact information that's on record. So, you know, there's, I think there's a lot of opportunity to continue to improve these codes. And I mean, I think that we all recognize policymaking is an iterative process. You know, I don't hear, you know, well, I should say, as Director Malloy explained, if we were to try to revise the ordinance, at this point, we're looking at nine to 10 months of delay. And I don't hear support from any fellow board members in doing that. So I, you know, at this point, I think the best way forward, I have to say, is to implement the ordinance we have today and really test out some of these enforcement mechanisms that have been highlighted here. I mean, this is all new, as you said, that with just two significant violations, someone could be required to come before a level five public hearing by the zoning administrator. So, you know, I would simply pledge to constituents that now I, that my office will be an ally in making sure that significant violations are recorded and that the code that we have today is actually enforced. And furthermore, as we continue to see issues with this ordinance, that I will also be happy to take the lead in helping to revise it and engage all elements of the community in doing so.
Thank you, Supervisor Coonan. I understand your situation coming in at the last lap, so to speak, in this process. But let me say that it has been an ongoing one. We had public hearings on it. We had input. And then there's somewhat of a conflict. I mean, part of the Coastal Act is to assure that the general public who do not live on the coast have access to it. And that's part of this whole situation that's that's developed from, as the result of the 19, was it 1972 Coastal Act that was approved by voters of California. So it creates somewhat of a conflict of its own on the planning process of what this county might want and what the Coastal Commission, which is enacted by law and are represented by many elected officials as well. But so it's a dicey situation, but I really want to say for the the board in the past, and I know that Supervisor Coonan realizes this, that we went through a long process to get to where we are and we got some give more than we took or received more than we gave out from the Coastal Commission. So I think that it's as good as we're going to get for this time. And I do appreciate that we certainly will take a continued look at this. And I understand your comments Supervisor Coonan. And I think this is the best we can get at this point, and we will keep an eye on it. I'll entertain a motion.
Chair, there's a motion and a second. The motion.
With you and Coonerty, I'm sorry. Yeah, it's been a long one. Yeah, all right. Okay, please call the roll.
Supervisor Coonan.
Aye.
Friend.
Aye.
Coonerty.
Aye.
Capit.
Aye.
And Chair McPherson.
All right. Now, we are going to skip to a scheduled item for 10:45 and it's almost 11 o'clock, but we didn't want to finish that item. Item number 13, Zone 7 Board of Directors Special Meeting. The Board of Supervisors shall recess in order to permit the Board of Directors of the San Diego County Flood Control and Water Conservation District, Zone 7, to convene and carry out a special meeting as outlined in the memorandum of Zone 7 Board Chair. And that's that, Friend. We have a memo of the Zone 7 Chair, a special meeting for today, January 26, 2021. And Zone 7 Board of Directors Agenda, January 26, 2021. Supposedly to start at 10:45, but we're going to be closer to 11. Supervisor Friend, would you please take over your Zone 7 Board Chair?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. I'd like to welcome everybody. We're going to get the Zone 7 meeting underway. We're going to, for January 26, 2021, our 10:45 scheduled item. We'll begin with a roll call from the clerk.
Thank you. Director Coonan.
Present.
Coonerty.
Here.
Capit.
Here.
McPherson.
Here.
Colbertson. Bilicik.
Here.
Non-voting members, Lucas.
I think she's here.
I see her online. I'm gonna, there you go. Thank you. And non-voting member Gonzalez. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. We're going to move on to the consideration of latest additions, corrections, revisions, and deletions. Mr. Strudley, are there any changes to today's agenda?
Not that I'm aware of, Chair Friend.
All right, and thank you. We're obviously thinking a lot about you up in the evacuation zone. Thank you for making the time to be with us today. We're going to move on to item three, which is oral communications. This is an opportunity for members of the community, as well as the Board of Directors, to address this board on any item that's on today's agenda or is within the purview of the Zone 7 Board. Each speaker will have no more than three minutes to address us. I do believe that Dr. Belisich would like to address us first, then I'd like to open it up for the community for an opportunity to speak during oral communications.
Thank you, Chair Friend. First of all, I would like to introduce Violet Lucas as a new non-voting member. She was introduced at the last meeting but wasn't able to be here. So I wanted to make sure that everybody's aware she is present. She is a lifetime resident of Watsonville, lives in District 7, and is very much aware of the flooding areas that we have in the levee. So, and then also I wanted to introduce and welcome Councilmember Aurelio Gonzalez, also a non-voting member. But I'm not sure if he's on or not, but wanted to welcome him to the group. And then for Bruce McPherson, I just wanted to welcome you as being the Chair of the Board of Supervisors.
Thank you.
Thank you for all the welcomes, and we appreciate your background photo there. Madam Clerk, is there anybody from the community that'd like to address us during oral communications?
We have one speaker so far. If you give me one second, I will share the screen and turn on the timer. Speaker with the, who is calling in with the telephone number 2915. You will have two minutes to speak. I am unmuting you. Please accept the unmute and start speaking. The timer will begin when you start.
Good morning. This is Becky Steinbruner. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Thank you. I note that there is an agenda item number 11 on this morning's Board of Supervisor agenda that was not able to be reviewed and publicly discussed before this meeting that directly applies to this meeting. So I'm curious if this special meeting will be able to take action, given that there was no action yet taken on item number 11 to form the Joint Power Authority. I think that's a good move to bring all of those entities and jurisdictions together and to move forward on improving flood control for the Zone 7 areas. Again, I do want to suggest that the Zone 7 and the new jurisdiction, joint powers being formed, consider doing some controlled flooding in the agricultural areas that are fallow to allow for groundwater recharge. As I've mentioned before, Dr. Helen Donkey at UC Davis has done extensive research on this, and it works. The Paharo Valley area has had problems with seawater intrusion. And the Paharo Valley Water Management Agency is doing a stellar job to address it. But this could be one more tool in the box that could help prevent seawater intrusion or push it back. I hope you will consider this and have a public workshop with Dr. Donkey as a guest. Thank you very much.
And Director Friend, that appears to be the last public comment we have.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. We'll move on to item four, which is the approval of the Zone 7 Board Meeting Minutes. Is there any director that has any comment on the minutes before we open it up for the community? Seeing none. Is there anybody from the community that'd like to address us on this item?
Chair, I see no public comment on this item.
All right, we'll bring it back to the board for action. Is there a motion?
I'll move for approval.
Okay, we've got a motion from Director Capit and a second from Director Belisich. Director Coonan, I assume you may want to abstain on this item?
I'll abstain, yes, thank you.
Okay, then we'll do a roll call vote, please.
Director Coonan.
Abstain.
Coonerty.
Aye.
Capit.
Aye.
McPherson.
Aye.
Colbertson. Bilicik.
Yes.
Thank you.
And we'll just pretend that I voted aye on that item two.
I apologize, Chair Friend.
It was a phantom call, Chair's vote. Don't worry about it. All right, so we're going to move on to the action of the consent agenda. While this is listed as item five, it actually addresses items nine and 10 on the consent agenda. Would any board member like to speak to any of the items on consent? Director Capit, you still have your hand raised. Are you interested in speaking on the consent item or is that?
No, I'm sorry. I shouldn't, I should have put the hand down.
That's okay. That's all right. Is there anybody from the community that'd like to address us on the consent items?
Chair, I see nobody from the community with their hand raised.
Yeah, I would entertain a motion from the board.
I would like to make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Okay, we've got a motion from Director Belisich, a second from Director McPherson. We've got a roll call vote, please.
Director Coonan.
Aye.
Coonerty.
Aye.
Capit.
Aye.
McPherson.
Aye.
Colbertson. Bilicik.
Yes.
And Chair Friend.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I get really sensitive when I don't. All right, so move on to the regular agenda. Item six is, as the Board of Directors of the Flood Control and Water Conservation District, Zone 7, we're going to consider nominations for election of the Zone 7 Board of Directors Chair and Vice Chair as outlined in the memo of the District Engineer, Mr. Strudley.
Thank you, Chair Friend, members of the board. In conformance with the rules and regulations of Zone 7, the board typically elects and nominates the Chair and Vice Chairperson for the upcoming calendar year at our January Board Meeting, which is what this item deals with. The election is held by a majority vote. We have had tremendous success in the administration of Zone 7 in addition to advocacy items with the existing Chair and Vice Chair. And staff recommendation is to continue to seat our existing Chair as the ongoing Chair of the District and to continue to have our Vice Chair as Director Belisich, so that we have some great representation from the city of Watsonville. And I also just wanted to add, as a strongly related but separate item that I didn't have a chance to get my hand up on during oral communications, we did receive confirmation from the city of Watsonville of Dr. Belisich's continued appointment from the city of Watsonville as our voting member and wanted to welcome Ari Parker as a confirmed alternate voting member for the city of Watsonville moving forward.
Thank you, Mr. Strudley. Are there any comments from board members before we open it up for the community? Seeing none. Is there anybody from the community that'd like to address us on this item?
Yes, Chair, there's, we have one caller.
Thank you.
Give me one second. Okay, caller whose telephone number ends in 2915. You will have two minutes to speak. When I unmute you, please accept it and begin speaking.
Hello, this is Becky Steinbruner. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Thank you. I am very glad to hear that Ari Parker will be involved in this Zone 7. She is a strong advocate, as is Director Belisich, for the Watsonville area. Those communities especially that are very prone to the hazards of flooding along the Paharo River. So I'm very glad to hear that Ari Parker is now an alternate and look forward to future meetings with all of the board intact and looking out for the best interest of those affected by potential flooding. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next caller is Monica McGuire. You have two minutes to speak. I'm unmuting you. Please accept the unmute and start speaking. The timer will begin when you start.
Hi there. Monica McGuire, yes, asking that you, again, for ease as well as respect, acknowledge that you know that caller from telephone number 2915 is Becky Steinbruner and the chances of it being anybody else are very slim and that you honor her because she is calling and you can, and she always adds so much. Also, the timing and such before of asking for a public comment didn't allow me to get the hand raised. So there's just technical issues with the number of people still, and please keep allowing for that. It does seem as though the questions that Ms. Steinbruner raised in the first comment she made are things that could be answered and just again asking that you answer our comments. And jokingly, as Mr. Friend talked about, he doesn't like to be ignored. It's obvious that no one does. So please do respond fully. Thank you so much.
And Chair, that appears to be our last public comment.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. I apologize, Ms. McGuire, that we missed you on the oral communications. Thanks for that information. Is there a motion to actually nominate? While there's a recommendation from staff, I think formally the names have to be actually nominated for Chair and Vice Chair. So if there's somebody, if there's nomination, now would be the opportunity to do it from the board?
Mr. Chair, I'd like to make the nomination for Chair Friend to continue as Chair and as Vice Chair.
Second.
Are there any other nominations? Okay, we'll close the nominations and we'll move to a vote from, the motion was from Director McPherson, the second is from Director Coonerty. Roll call, please.
Director Coonan.
Aye.
Coonerty.
Aye.
Capit.
Aye.
McPherson.
Aye.
Colbertson. Colbertson? Billisich?
Aye.
Chair Friend?
Aye. That item passes unanimously. We'll move on to item seven, which is, as the Board of Directors of Zone 7, to consider approval of a joint exercise power of powers agreement by and among the City of Watsonville, the County of Monterey, the County of Santa Cruz, Monterey County Water Resources Agency, the Santa Cruz County Flood Control and Water Conservation District, or Zone 7, to form the Paharo Regional Flood Management Agency to confer the indemnity agreement regarding the Paharo River Flood Risk Management Project and take related actions as outlined in the memo of the District Engineer. We have the indemnity agreement, the JPA agreement for this new body and a slide set. Mr. Strudley?
Thank you, Chair Friend, members of the board. For this item, I'd like to defer to our District Engineer, Matt Machado, who will present item seven and the presentation associated for it. Matt?
Mr. Strudley, are you on?
I was in transition, getting upgraded. So I appreciate that. I'm live now. So thank you, Chair Friend and Directors of Zone 7. I'm going to share my screen here in a moment to present a PowerPoint. One second, please. Pick the right one. Can everybody see my screen? Okay, thank you. All right, I'd like to begin with thanking the Zone 7 Board of Directors for their continued support of this project. I'd also like to, extra thanks to Director Caput for his continued community engagement, also to Director Billisich for her continued community engagement and to special thanks to Chair Friend for her strong and effective advocacy leading to, all of this leading to some critical milestones this year, which I'll share in a moment. Oh, okay. Let's see here. One second. I didn't move, did I? There it goes. Can you see this second slide? All right. Sorry, making sure our technology is working here. So share a little bit about the history. So back in 1949, the Army Corps constructed the current system that we have, the levees that we have. But as we all know, even as early as 1955, we had significant flooding. Again, we had flooding in 1958 and then another major flood in 1995. And then again, in 1998 was significant flooding. So we've had a history of flooding, which has led to the need to do project development of a solution for this flooding. We can see on this slide the long history of planning with different alternatives and different processes. I do want to take your attention to our December 2019 major milestone where, when the Director's Report was approved by the Army Corps of Engineers. This gave us federal environmental clearance, allowing us to begin design and secure federal funding, major milestone. That milestone, which you can see December 12, 2019, has led to securing additional funds for design work. We did receive 1.8 billion of federal appropriations in fiscal year 20, back in 2020 in February. And most recently, we received 2.815 million dollars of federal funds for FY21. This does round out our federal funds needed to complete the design of Phase 1. So major milestones and the momentum continues. And so we've also seen some major milestones with our state partners. Our project does have a subventions agreement with the State of California. This subventions agreement does allow a 70% match to our local share. And I won't get into all the details of how that funding works specifically, but I will share that the state has been a great partner and we see opportunity to even further increase those funding matches beyond the 70%. Our project is such that it could qualify for even a greater match, but that would require, as you can see on the slide, a water code fix, which would be special legislation. But we are striving that direction and we feel that there is a great path forward with our state partners as well as with our federal partners. So back to our project specifics. The item before you today is our Paharo Regional Flood Management Agency, JPA adoption. The formation of a regional flood risk management, JPA, has been identified as the most efficient and effective governance approach for reducing flood risk on the lower Paharo River. It would be a single, sorry, it would be a single purpose agency, best positioned to support flood risk reduction, project implementation and ensure consistent long-term operation, maintenance, repair, replacement and rehabilitation of the system. And so that is our decision today. And so our recommendation is going to be to form this new JPA. I would like to share with the board that later this year, we envision pursuing a Prop 218 rate assessment that will go to all the voters of the affected area. We would also begin design of the levees, sign an agreement with the Army Corps of Engineers, and we expect to complete our SEQA, our State Environmental Document, later this year. Today's proposed JPA, the Paharo Regional Flood Management Agency, would also act as the local sponsor. They provide assurances to state and federal agencies for the operations and maintenance. The JPA would be the finance and lead for implementation. And it would consist of the five member agencies, those being the Santa Cruz County Board of Supervisors, Monterey County, the City of Watsonville and yours, Zone 7 District, and then also the Monterey County Water Resource Agency. Additionally, the JPA would be a singular agency focused on flood issues and project delivery. It would have preference with state and federal government to provide funding for, to single governing as the local sponsor. A JPA would be an efficient decision-making authority and a single JPA would have the ability to quickly adapt to changing conditions. So a lot of benefits to having a JPA represent our project delivery. We do expect, well, there are some obligations as a JPA and I will quickly go through them. At this time, there are no financial obligations to member agencies. That's initially the case. I would like to share that in the future, we would be bringing back a funding agreement to each of our member boards, including the Zone 7 Board. This funding agreement would be funded within our existing Zone 7 budget. The obligation to JPA also would be to execute any cost share and other agreements with state and federal agencies. And another obligation would be to pursue and adopt the indemnity agreement for Watsonville. Our JPA powers will include the ability to acquire, construct, manage, control, maintain, improve, repair, replace and operate any infrastructure, issue bonds, participate in financing, enter into contracts, hire staff and perform all acts necessary to carry out the purpose of the agreement and the agency. The proposed JPA would be composed as follows. It would be one member of the Board of Supervisors, one member of our Zone 7 Board, one member of the Watsonville City Council, one member of the Monterey County Water Resource Agency and one member of the Monterey County Board of Supervisors. Some highlights of how the new board will conduct its business. It would require, to meet quorum, would require three-fifths of board members. Of course, majority of quorum to carry any action. Each member's vote would be equally weighted. One interesting component is that the annual budget would require unanimous vote of all members. And operating expenses will be established through a separate agreement, which we would bring back to your board and to the other boards to adopt. Some of the next steps for the JPA is the administrative tasks to set it up and then to fund through an interim basis by member agency staff. We would develop a charter, other guiding, planning documents. We would look at long-term staffing plans and we would, at some point, transition the operations and maintenance from the member agencies to the JPA. The recommended actions before you today is to consider the Joint Exercise of Powers Agreement by and among the member agencies. And then to consider the indemnity agreement regarding the Paharo River Flood Risk Reduction Project by and among the member agencies and authorize the Chair to sign the indemnity agreement. And staff is available to answer any questions that you may have.
Thank you, Director Machado. Just as one or two points of clarification here, the slide deck said that one of the members is from the Watsonville City Council. It's actually selected by the Watsonville City Council. It doesn't have to be a city council member of the City of Watsonville. So just a minor but important change on that, or notification on that. And two, there was an issue raised by a member of the public as to whether Zone 7 could act in advance of the County Board of Supervisors on effectuating this agreement and we can. We've got that authority and ability to. We're just another member agency or party to this greater JPA. Are there any members of the board that have any questions on this right now? Please, Director Koenig.
Yeah, so in my understanding is today, we're not actually agreeing to any specific project. We're simply creating a JPA as stated. So I mean, the details of any project or something that would come before that JPA in the future?
So that technically is correct. The project is fairly well described through the Army Corps process and through our environmental documents. But technically today, our recommended action is to form the JPA and that is a specific action of its own.
Great, thank you.
Yeah, I have a quick question, Chairman Friend. Yeah, I noticed, is there a set number of members on the JPA? Could we add one? Could we, you know, add two or?
Chair, if I can, if I may answer that?
Oh, I'm sorry. Please, please do directly, yes.
Thank you. And so the structure of the JPA is set by the JPA agreement itself. And so adoption today would set that the member agency representation at the five members, as I described in the PowerPoint. So Director Caput, the adoption today would set that structure up today.
Okay, so I don't know. Director Friend, it said either or, one from Santa Cruz County, that would be District 2, you, or an or District 4, that myself. How do you feel about that?
Well, it also has, under the Zone 7 appointee, a position coming from either District 2 or 4. So in theory, we could both, if the respective bodies supported that, serve on this JPA just representing either Zone 7 or the Board of Supervisors.
Okay, so that would, we're talking about either yourself or myself, not both of us. Is that correct?
No, what I'm saying is that we could both serve. We would, one would represent the Board of Supervisors as a Board of Supervisor appointee and one would represent the Zone 7 appointee.
Okay. We're talking about two out of the five then?
Correct.
Right. Go ahead. Thanks, Matt.
Director Caput, if I may, the conversation, the way the document and the agreement has been written would be to have representation from your district, so you, and also representation from District 2 Supervisor Friend or Director Friend. So our, the way the document is written is to have both of your representation on the board from the start.
Okay, that's great. And, you know, this project is so important that I wouldn't, I would really not care if I was not included as long as we moved forward and got this thing approved. We've been looking at this, well, my entire career on the board for 10 years and it's been discussed for 30 years before I even got on the board. So I'm just happy that we're going to do this and I just wanted to clarify, you know, the representation on the joint powers. But thanks, thanks a lot, Matt.
Any other, Director McPherson?
Yeah, I can make these comments as well on item number 11 on our County Board of Supervisors agenda. But I just have to, this has been a long time in coming. It is, well, over the top. I want to thank our county team, especially Supervisor Friend and Supervisor Caput, our county administrative officer, Carlos Palacios, who was the former city manager of Watsonville, and our Department of Public Works Director, Machado, as well as Mark Strudley, for this work over the years, especially to you, Mr. Chair Supervisor Friend. You've traveled many times to Washington DC to work on this in a collaborative effort to get our federal partners. This is a long time in coming. There's going to be one big issue in the, in the future about approval from voters to support this. It's going to be a real test, but it needs to be done. And I just hope, this is an example of some things that are so needed since 1949, take a long time in coming. But it's about time and I hope it, it just results in a real project in the not-too-distant future. So thank you, everybody, for your tremendous efforts that you finally got this to this point. And it's the best way to do this in a cooperative effort for that whole area in the Paharo River. So thank you very much and I'm really excited for the people in the South County. You need this protection and you need it dearly and I hope we all see this come to fruition and a great project in the near future.
Yes, I'll jump in there real quick, Supervisor Friend. In about four years, a little over four years ago, five years ago, actually, we did the bench excavation project, which removed 350,000 cubic yards of sediment that was building up over the years. And if we had not done that, that was, that was billions of dollars. I believe it was over 12 million. And if we had not done that, when we did have the major rain that came in about four years ago, it could have been, it could have been a big flood again. We, the flood, the Paharo River went actually to the crest, but it never went over the crest of the levees. And we also had, because of the Board of Supervisors, there were holes in the levee along Coward Road and Riverside Road. And within 12 hours, our board approved a $2.5 million project with money we really didn't have at the time for granite rock to go out there and dump tons of rock to bolster the levee. If it, if it had broke, the water, I understand, would have gone straight for senior village area. And anyway, I'm very proud of the way the board reacted to that and I'm very proud of the City of Watsonville and the board doing the bench excavation project, which reduced the risk of flooding of the Paharo.
Thank you for that and thank you for the kind words, Director McPherson, and also when you were state senator for supporting some of the funding on the Prop 1A funds that we're now using for this. There has been more movement on this project in the last 12 months than there were in the previous 60. And this creation of this JPA is, while it seems like just a legal formality, is actually a significant movement and an absolutely essential component toward the construction process as required by the state and federal government, our partners on this. I know Directors, or Mr. Strudley will speak a little bit to it, but we have some more good news that just came through. The federal side was even announced today by Congressman Panetta. So there's, there's just, this is, there's a lot of momentum here and this is an essential next step. I appreciate your comments on that. Director Billisich, I believe you ought to comment?
Yes, I, I just want to thank everybody that's been involved, but especially Mark and Matt. You know, getting that federal money and you, Zach, and Jimmy Panetta, that has been, I can't tell you. When I was first on the council, I remember having these conversations with Sam Farr. I can't tell you, I, when I was first on the council, I remember having these conversations with Sam Farr. And now to see it happen is just great to have federal dollars here. And then to have the Department of Water Resources, our state money. That's, I mean, it's incredible, the progress this group has made. But in addition to that, city residents really appreciate. Your strong advocacy, advocacy, had good to see for the reduction in trying to get the money. To be reduced for what they're actually going to have to pay the, the rate. And I know that they keep working on that, working on that. And I think, you know, we couldn't have better leadership working on that project.
Thank you. We are very intimately involved with the state on that right now to see no. All with our elected delegation and the State Department of Water Resources. We got a great team, especially now with Senator Laird, who is the former director of DWR in that spot. There isn't a whole lot to update there under, other than I can say that, that all three, Assembly Member Rebus and Stone and Senator Laird. Are completely in our, on our side on what we're looking to do in order to make sure we can reduce the responsibility of the, of the residents down there financially. But thank you for that, Director Billisich. It is, are there any other comments from directors before we open it up to the community for this item? I, I don't see any. I will open it up to the, the community. Anybody like to address this on this item?
Yes, we have a couple of people with their hands up. Our first speaker is. Bob, you will have two minutes to speak. I'm unmuting you. Please accept the unmute and start speaking. The timer will begin when you start. Caller Bob, I know you had your hand up for some time. You might have left us. Oh, there you are.
No, I didn't. I'm here. This is Bob Colbertson. I'm a director. So I'm muted on the regular director comments. My, my question is, what will the JPA have in relationship to San Benito County and Santa Clara County where 80% of the watershed is?
And Director, I'm going to switch you over to the panelist.
Thank you, Bob. We will get that question addressed in just a second when we bring it back to the board. Are there any other, you, you had mentioned, I believe, Madam Clerk, that there are additional public?
We have one more public comment. Caller whose phone number ends in 2915, you will have two minutes to speak. I'm unmuting you. Please accept the unmute, start speaking. The timer will start then.
Thank you. This is Becky Steinbrenner. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Thank you. I also have the question that Mr. Colbertson brought up. What about the other entities that are? Part of the watershed that drains into and affects the Paharo Valley River? And I, I would like, I, I will be interested to hear the, the board's response to his question. I really want to thank again publicly the efforts of Mr. Strudley. I remember hearing that it was because of his good work that. Um, I'm, I'm hearing something else here. Can you still hear me?
Yes.
All right. Thank you. There's interference on your end, I think. I remember hearing from, I think it was Congressman Panetta and also the. The federal government agency, the Army Corps of Engineers, that the reason they felt comfortable moving forward on this. Was because of the excellent work that Mr. Strudley had done and presented. So he's my hero. And I really am glad that he's on board with all of this. And I want to thank Supervisor Caput for ensuring that there is representation on this jurisdiction. From both districts two and four. That's critical because both districts are heavily invested and involved. By this project and both county district supervisors need to be on this. I'm a little concerned that the Watsonville City representative does not have to be a city council member. An elected official, but I have full confidence in the current selection of Director Billisich, having served on the city council and very.
And that appears to be the end of public comment. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you. And there was a question from Mr. Colbertson, Director Colbertson to Mr. Strudley.
Yeah, thank you, Chair Friend. Director Colbertson, in response to your question about the representation in the upper watershed. That is accomplished through Zone Seven's participation, as well as the county's participation. As member agencies to the Paharo River Watershed Flood Prevention Authority. It was a JPA that was established many years ago. Because of this exact issue and the recognition of waters coming from elsewhere higher up in the watershed. The, the JPA's jurisdiction is restricted in this case because we really want to focus our efforts and our leadership on. The local projects here, but the issues upstream are being well represented and dealt with through both. Board of the, the other JPA, the Flood Prevention Authority, as well as staff's membership in the staff working group. So we can continue to respond to your questions related to upper watershed issues at the staff level and relay those. To the staff working group of the Flood Prevention Authority as they come up.
Thank you. Is there, I think it's now time to consider a motion. Is there a motion for the recommended actions?
Yeah. Can't hear you.
Director Caput, we're looking for a motion now.
I'll make a motion. That's you where you're gonna, you're, you're on mute. Yeah, there you go.
Yes, I, I was going to make the motion and back either one. It doesn't matter. I think.
I'll go second. Let her have the first.
All right, so Director.
A quick, a quick comment. I just want to thank Bruce Leclerc for all the work he did. Before Mark Strudley came on board. Mark, you did a great job and we're very proud of you. But Bruce Leclerc did a great job also getting us to where we are. Okay, thank you.
Okay, so a couple of things. Direct, if you're, if you could mute, if you're not actually speaking right now, that's why we're getting the feedback. Thank you. I still didn't actually hear a motion for the recommended actions, although I heard a lot of conversation about who wanted to make it. So Director Billisich, if, I think you wanted to do it, but if you could formally actually make that motion, that'd be great.
Okay, I will make the motion that we approve this new JPA and move forward.
Okay. Okay, I'll assume that's for all the recommended actions, correct, Director Billisich?
Yes, all the recommended actions. Perfect.
We have a motion from Director Billisich and a second from Director Caput. A roll call, please.
Director Koenig?
Hi.
Coonerty?
Hi.
Caput?
Hi.
McPherson?
Hi.
Colbertson?
Hi.
Billisich?
Hi.
Chair Friend?
Hi. Great. We'll move on to item eight. Which is as the board of director, this is the program manager's report, as the board of directors of Zone Seven to consider the status report on the Paharo River flood risk management project is outlined in the memo of the district engineer. Mr. Strudley, please.
Thank you, Chair Friend, the members of the board. As, as Chair Friend mentioned earlier, this, this is a tremendously exciting time for this project. We've reached tremendous milestones over the past year, including the item that you just approved. So we thank you for your support for that item. On the federal side, we have been making tremendous strides. As Chair Friend mentioned and District Engineer Machado mentioned. We received our director's report last year. Along with an initial appropriation of 1.8 million dollars through the fiscal year 20 work plan that was an initial. Funding push to start the design work of the first prioritized reach of the project. And just after, actually, we developed a slide presentation, which is why the slide presentation. Misrepresents it slightly at 2.915. We just received word. That we were awarded an additional 2.815 million dollars in design phase funding from the Army Corps and the FY21 work plan. So huge thanks goes out to the, the ton of work that Congressman Jimmy Panetta has been doing for us. He and his staff have been absolutely. Fantastic and, and fully behind this project. Chair Friend and Director Caput and their advocacy for this project, including their leadership on our trips to DC. As well as all the other tremendous support we get from Director Billisich, the city of Watsonville, our partners in Monterey County. It has just been a huge group effort to get to this point, but this is. This is the funding we need from the Army Corps to start design for the first phase of this project. We are entering the design phase. This project is going to start getting designed. That's, that's huge. Any, any day now, we're going to, I wanted to have an executed design agreement to show you all today. That has not been possible, but literally any day now, we will be getting an executed, a fully executed design agreement from the Army Corps. This builds upon your board's approval from last June for the chair to sign an executed design agreement. Which we will have him sign as soon as a final version is ready from the Army Corps, which again, we expect it to happen any day. The Army Corps has accepted our closeout requests of our prior agreements. And with that request comes a credit of just above 3.3 million dollars, which of extra costs of staff time that we have. Provided birth from our county and Monterey County. Towards the project and those costs will be credited when we sign a construction agreement, a part of PPA, a project partnership agreement. When this first design phase is finished. So we won't see that credited money yet, but we will see it credited. To the project when we enter the construction phase. We have been getting tremendous support from the Army Corps. Probably not many of you or maybe none of you had the chance to look at the work plan issuance, but we were, we were top dogs in terms of. The most funding out of the work plan for the allocation. So this is a big deal. That's a great allocation from the work plan. We continue to work with our partners at the state. As soon as we have the project management plan and the design agreement ready from the Army Corps, that will be funneled into our subventions agreement with the state of California. Again, we have the capability through AB489 to leverage our subventions allocation ahead of or in the absence of the Army Corps. But if we were to exercise that, it would present some risk to us for continued investment from the federal side. So we're not going to exercise that yet because. Everything has been moving so smoothly and successfully with the Army Corps. We don't want to jeopardize the, the federal investment to this project, which is to the tune of about 250 million dollars. So we're going to continue on our path that we were typically going to follow with federal execution. Of the project and the subventions, supporting 70% of the locally required dollars to support the project. As Chair Friend mentioned, we are having additional conversations with the state about that 70% allocation. And we have tremendous support again from Rebus, Stone and Laird. In our advocacy for the project. So we will continue to provide updates to this board. As we continue to make strides along that front, but we are very hopeful that we'll have some sort of improvement and resolution to the cost share coming from the state. On, on the local match, we, we have spoken to you before about our aspirations and need. To develop a benefit assessment district to support that local match to the project. Obviously, we continue to strive towards reducing that local match requirement through these conversations with the state and we're hopeful of that. We continue to apply for grants to cover our costs in accessory of our subventions authorization or, or as part of it. But, you know, everything is aligned for this project except for the things that we can't control like COVID. And the pandemic and the economic effects that it's had throughout the country, including locally here. And that is what limits our capability right now to. In vision going out for a benefit assessment district creation this spring. In all likelihood, that will probably occur sometime in the fall. When the economy rebounds and it is appropriate and. And meaningful for us to, to engage with the public on that issue and to strive to raise funds. And if we are so lucky. As to not require funds from the public, should our conversations with the state be successful, then we will have that news to share with everyone. You know, you all are now fully up to speed on the governance issues associated with this project with the, the tentative adoption of the JPA. To support this project and other flood risk reduction solutions in the Paharo area. And we continue to work on our SEQA efforts, our environmental review efforts, and we expect. To have a draft document ready for public review sometime later this summer. And with that, I am happy to answer any questions from the board.
Thank you, Mr. Strudley. You're the right person at the right time for this project and we do appreciate. Everything you're doing and especially as I've mentioned earlier, with all the other things you have to do for the county with debris flow and other flood modeling. And your own personal situation, evacuating from the fires and such. But not letting this project slip has been a lot, a huge testament to your character and your abilities and I want to publicly acknowledge that. Thank you for all that. Is there anybody from the board that has any questions on this, this update?
Question, Chair?
Please.
Thank you, Mr. Strudley, for the, for the update. I'm curious just how the, the project accounts for sea level rise and increase. You know, atmospheric rivers coming our way. You know, I very much understand the need to, to keep Watsonville safe, as well as the surrounding farmlands. But this is also exactly the kind of area that. The, in, environmentalists and climate scientists would tell us is, is ultimately one that we should look at returning to nature. So I'm wondering if there's any, you know, ways this project has accounted for things like that. You know, what would happen in the event that, you know, even with these improvements, it looked like the, the power river is going to expand. Beyond the capacity of, of the levees, you know, is there opportunity to flood the agricultural side of, of the area as suggested by. Member of the public, Becky Steinbrenner. I'm just curious how, you know, how we look forward to go, going, how we're looking at going forward in a, in a changing world here.
Sure, those are, those are fantastic questions and, and there's a lot there. So let me see if I can unpack it all and respond and you can let me know if I missed anything. The, the Army Corps did and is required to do a climate change assessment with their projects. So there is an appendix to our feasibility study, which outlines their analysis. I'm happy to share that with you offline if you care to look at it. But, but the details may bore you. The punchline out of that appendix was that there was. Existing data suggests a, a, a very weak to nonexistent. Relationship for climate change. So I'm not, I'm not denying that there's climate change and meteor is the Army Corps and we are certainly. Thinking along those lines, but the analysis that they are required to do. Suggests that there are not hugely demonstrable. Engineering components to this project that need to be put in place above those that are part of the project itself. To deal with the climate change, expected climate change and the analysis that came out of that appendix. That being said, the project does propose to provide 100-year level of protection. To most of the lower Paharo Valley. And with that protection will be. A fair amount of, for lack of a better term, freeboard that can accommodate a lot of the effects of climate change that we will see. It's also helpful to note that although we are keen on securing this 100-year level of protection, then that is kind of the minimum de facto standard. For flood control projects around the state and around the country. The most critical and, and harmful events are the ones that are of. Higher frequency, potentially lower, lower magnitude than 100-year level event, but higher frequency. The ones that do the most damage. And are of the most significant threat to communities around the country are kind of in the vicinity of the 20-year, the 50-year recurrence interval flows. Those are the ones that. Really at a bare minimum need to be tackled by any flood control project. And this one obviously accomplishes that. With sea level rise, we are doing a number of things. One is, we are actually pursuing a separate project under. Another special district that's strongly related to this one, the Paharo Storm Drain Maintenance District. It's actually the precursor. another special district that's strongly related to this one, the Paharo Storm Drain Maintenance District. It's actually the precursor Maintaining Agency of the Levy System before Zone Seven was created in nineteen ninety-one. And that project is engaged with the Army Corps Continuing Authorities Program to develop a multi-benefit ecosystem restoration project in the lower Paharo River, the Watsonville Slough and the Lagoon. And we are just now beginning to enter into the feasibility phase for that project. It's a much smaller scale project than the one being described here, but we do have full funding for it. So we have fifty percent cost share coming from the Army Corps and fifty percent coming from a grant from OPC. So there's no cost to the ratepayers of that special district, which are essentially the same ratepayers as Zone Seven. That project will envision to expand the tidal marsh and wetland complex of the lower slough system to provide a capacitor, a shock absorber for tidal incursions that we are tending to see get worse and worse with sea level rise and with stronger倾 tide. So we look forward to sharing with you more detail on that project as it evolves through the Power Storm Drain Maintenance District. We can share that with you through Zone Seven. And the other thing I wanted to respond to you and see if I covered all the bases, Director, is your your comment about flooding agricultural land and groundwater recharge. We have certainly been thinking along those lines. You know, it's fantastic that we have members of the community that are thinking that way, but we've been thinking about along those lines for quite some time now. The levy setbacks that are described by this project envision additional recharge to groundwater through a higher frequency of higher flow events that would engage with a floodplain that is wider behind setback levees. Levees that are essentially set back further away from their existing configuration. Flooding adjacent agricultural land is kind of a nonstarter for two reasons, one of which is it's just not feasible to do in terms of the type of agriculture we have here versus the type of ag that is present in the central valley, which much more is much more capable at allowing for recharge without damaging crops. So apple orchards, strawberries, truck, truck crops and other things are not tolerant to incursions of floodwater as they are to almond orchards and and rice fields in the Central Valley, which is typically what you see there. The other thing is that, you know, we don't have a huge expansive floodplain, and so it's it's not possible and reasonable for us to ask the agricultural community to take on that much of a burden, even while a flood project is is being built to protect just urban areas. We are trying to accomplish flood protection for multiple areas, including protection of the agricultural economy and agricultural well-being, as well as the urban well-being of the Paharo Valley. So I'll just end there and and see if I responded to all of your questions and concerns.
Yeah, that's great. I think you touched everything, and I appreciate your comprehensive answer.
Any other questions from Directors? This is just an acceptance file item. Are there any other questions? Okay, Director Billisich, she had a question?
Comment. Can I make a comment?
Please, yes, sorry.
I just want to say how much I have seen Mark and Matt work with the Paharo Valley community and the farming community. And they have been very, very concerned about flooding. If you recall, in, I think it was ninety-five, they lost so much when the flood went towards Paharo and the topsoil, everything. So it's really good that Mark continues to work with that group. Because we need their support to make this all work together.
Thank you. Is there any from the community that would like to address this on this item?
Chair, there, oh, we do have one person who has their hand up. Hold on one second, please. Okay. Caller whose telephone number ends in two nine one five, you are being unmuted. Please accept the unmute. When you start speaking, the timer will start.
Thank you. This is Becky Steinberger. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Thank you. Again, I also want to thank Mr. Strudley for his good work, and this is an excellent report. I also want to thank Supervisor Koenig for his very thoughtful questions about climate change and sea rise, and appreciated Mr. Strudley's very thorough response. Thank you for that information. It helps members of the public like me, who are also interested in this, to learn more. Regarding the possibility of controlled flooding, I I understand the difference in agricultural crops in the Paharo Valley versus the Central Valley. But there are a number of apple orchards in the Paharo Valley that I think could be considered. I I know that Dr. Dahlke, Helen Dahlke, has been studying which crops can handle flooding, or at least temporary flooding. And the orchard crops tend to be very resilient in terms of that. I know that she has focused on almonds because that is what is in her study area. But I would like to research myself the ability of apple orchards to also sustain temporary flooding. And to that end, I am aware that the Kelly Thomason Ranch has embarked upon a very meaningful and substantial managed aquifer recharge project where they are collecting stormwater runoff from adjacent farms and doing an excellent job in collecting stormwater. This could be used for for floodwater as well. Other projects like this, working with Resource Conservation District, the farmers recognize the benefit of the groundwater recharge, and the Kelly Thomason Ranch actually took
Chair, it appears that was the end of public comment.
Thank you. Is there a motion for this acceptance file?
I'll make a motion to accept this file.
Okay, there's a second?
Second.
All right, there's a motion from Director Billisich, and a second from Director Koenig, and and just I'd just like to close by saying, I mean, this these levees protect a lot more than agricultural land. They protect two federally disadvantaged communities in Watsonville and Paharo that rely on the lowest level of flood protection of any federally funded project in the state, and one of the lowest in the United States. If you ever wanted to witness something that could be really envisioned for inequity and questions about where funding goes across this world and priorities that clearly advantage upscale communities, this is a perfect example. And we should recognize that this project preserves the life and safety of the most disadvantaged within our respective two county communities, not just to mention their lifelines through the through the economic component of agriculture. So if anything, I think this project that's being proposed, as Director Strudley, Mr. Strudley alluded to, isn't even big enough, but I think that we should focus on on people's lives first before some of the other considerations, and I think that that's that's what we're doing with this. So we do have a motion and a second, and we'll do a roll call on this.
Director Koenig?
Aye.
Coonerty?
Aye.
Capit?
Aye.
McPherson?
Aye.
Colbertson? You are on mute, Director Colbertson?
Aye.
And Director Billisich?
Aye.
Chair Friend?
Aye, and thank you all. That will end the Zone Seven meeting. We'll have to reconvene the Board of Supervisors meeting, so I'll turn it back to Chair McPherson.
Okay, thank you. And great news, a great advancement. What a terrific project we have going now, on track. The hour is noon, but I would prefer to continue with our the remaining items on our agenda. I think we can get them in relatively short order before we go into closed session. So I am going to go back to item number nine, a public hearing to consider accepting the California Coastal Commission referred to as the CCC modifications to the ordinance number fifty-three forty-six, County Code Section thirteen ten six eleven through thirteen ten six sixteen regarding accessory structure, home occupations, temporary uses and structures, and and hosted rentals, adopt resolution accepting the commission's actions or modifications, adopt ordinance based on the modifications, and take related actions as outlined in the memorandum of the planning director. We have a resolution, temporary uses of CCC amendments, ordinance S CCC Section thirteen ten eleven, six eleven to six sixteen, CCC amendments. Amendments to thirteen ten six eleven six sixteen, CCC modification, strike out and underline, and a CCC staff report. We will now hear a presentation for our staff on this.
Chair McPherson, if you would give me one second. Director Malloy, I'm not seeing Stephanie online.
Oh. She was going to make the presentation.
I think she's there now.
Oh, there she is. She is here now. Thank you.
Hi there, can you hear me?
Yes.
Great, thank you. Good afternoon, Chair McPherson, Supervisor Stephanie Hanson, Principal Planner with the Planning Department. Today's hearing is to request that the board accept the Coastal Commission's modifications to the recently passed ordinance on accessory structures, home occupations, permitting temporary uses and structures, and hosted rentals. The board passed ordinance five three four six on September fifteenth of twenty twenty, clarifying existing code provisions and establishing new permit procedures aimed at supporting recovery from the economic effects of COVID nineteen pandemic procedures, which then became even more critical as we tried to recover from the CZU fires this summer. County Code Chapter thirteen ten implements the county's coastal program, and therefore amendments must be approved by the Coastal Commission. At the commission's hearing on January thirteenth this year, the commission agreed that the amendments are in conformance with the county's local coastal program and that they implement the California Coastal Act. The commission approved the amendments with two small modifications, which were to refer to the potential for coastal development permit requirements for cargo containers and also for temporary structures and uses. The text for these amendments appears on page one oh two of your packet. Staff is recommending that the board conduct a public hearing to accept these modifications with passage of the resolution transmitting the acceptance to back to the Coastal Commission and a new ordinance that incorporates the changes. As required by law, the amendments would then return to the Coastal Commission for approval before going into effect. Staff is available to answer any questions, and I believe Director Malloy is on as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any comments from the board members? Okay, stay none. Do we have any comments from the do we have any comments from the public?
Chair, I see one hand up. Okay, caller whose number ends in two nine one five, please begin speaking. The timer will start when you do.
Thank you. This is Becky Steinberger. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Thank you. I do have a question about the the change in County Code one three dot one zero dot six one two B about cargo containers. The language there says that they are allowed outside of the urban and rural services lines in all districts, all zone districts. I have never heard of a rural service line. I've heard of the urban service line, but I would appreciate hearing from Ms. Hanson, what is the definition of the rural service line? And to be clear, this would also, in general, allow businesses to occur, home occupation businesses to become permitted in the residential areas and allow, as I remember, up to five permanent full-time employees. So I'm really hoping that the board will pay attention to the impacts on the residential areas. But I am supportive of allowing cottage industries. Again, sort of harkening back to the vacation rental, there needs to be a way for the public to be able to weigh in when these businesses in their neighborhoods are causing harking, noise, whatever problems. And I look forward to supporting small business in our county, but would like some clarification on the rural service line that is stated in that code. Thank you very much.
And Chair, that is the end of public comment.
Okay, we will close the public hearing. Staff, do you have any brief answers to the question that was asked?
Yes, the the general plan establishes both an urban services boundary and a rural services boundary. It's been in place for many, many, many years. The rural service boundaries tend to encompass our smaller rural villages and towns, such as Boulder Creek, Felton, that that those kind of places. And there's, I don't know how many, but there's several of them throughout the county.
Okay. Any questions from the board? With it closed, we've closed the public hearing. Do I have a motion to steps recommended actions?
Still moved.
Moved by Supervisor Koenig?
Second.
Second by Coonerty. Please call and roll.
Supervisor Koenig?
Aye.
Friend?
Aye.
Coonerty?
Aye.
Capit? Supervisor Capit, we lost you. Can you please give your vote for this item?
Yeah, aye.
Thank you. And and Chair McPherson?
Aye.
Okay, that passes unanimously. We'll go to item number ten. Is a public hearing on the proposed easement by condemnation across real property located parking lot adjacent to twenty-six oh six and twenty-six ten Chanticleer Avenue, assess their parcel number zero two five one seven one two three, and consider resolution of necessity authorizing county council to institute eminent domain proceedings to obtain possession of the required real property interests as outlined in the memorandum of the Deputy CAO, Director of Public Works. We have a resolution of necessity, Murchison Taylor, I think that's the way it's pronounced, Exhibit A, Exhibit B, and due diligence declaration. I guess we would have comments from the county council on this, or is it Kimberly Finley that's going to present this?
Yes, hi, how are you?
Well, thank you, Kimberly Finley.
Good afternoon, Chair and members of the board. My name is Kimberly Finley. I'm the Chief Real Property Agent with the Department of Public Works. I appear before you today to request that the board conduct a public hearing regarding the proposed easement by condemnation across the real property adjacent to two six oh six and two six ten Chanticleer Avenue, APN zero two five one seven one twenty-three. And to request that the board adopt a resolution of necessity authorizing county council to institute imminent domain proceedings to obtain the necessary real property interests. Public Works is requesting a resolution of necessity to proceed with the imminent domain process to obtain three hundred and seventy-three square feet of permanent easement and nine hundred and forty square feet of temporary construction easement over a portion of the parking lot located at APN boat two five one seven one twenty-three. This parking lot is owned by Donald L. Murchinson and Dolores Murchinson as joint tenants, husband and wife, and Carl M. Taylor and Evelyn R. Taylor, husband and wife, as joint tenants, but doing business as Murchinson Taylors Owners Association. Substantial time and county resources have been expended in attempts to offer just compensation to the current property owners of record. However, due to historical complications with the title of this property and the fact that two of the four current owners of record have since deceased, we have been unable to complete payment of just compensation. The county must now move forward with acquiring the now move forward with acquiring the proposed easement rights as they are necessary to obtain ninety-three million dollars in currently approved funds for the Highway One Forty-First to SoCal auxiliary lanes and pedestrian bicycle overcrossing project. The Highway One project proposes to construct northbound and southbound auxiliary lanes between Forty-First Avenue and SoCal Avenue, and construct a new bicycle and pedestrian overcrossing at the Chanticleer Avenue. Historically, this section of Highway One has been the busiest in the county, serving over a hundred thousand vehicles a day, and the auxiliary lanes will benefit the public by improving traffic operations and reducing cut-through traffic. Additionally, the pedestrian bicycle overcrossing at Chanticleer Avenue offers additional public benefit by providing alternative routes for bicyclists and pedestrians. Based on the aforementioned, the Department of Public Works now recommends that the Board take the following actions. Number one, conduct a public hearing on the proposed easement by condemnation across real property located at the parking lot adjacent to two six oh six and two six ten Chanticleer Avenue, APN oh two five, one seven one, twenty three, and adopt a resolution necessity authorizing county council to institute imminent domain proceedings to obtain possession of the required real property interests. I'm available for any questions.
Thank you very much. Any questions from the Board? Any questions from the public?
Chair, I see no public comment.
Okay, thank you. We'll return to, we'll close the public hearing and return it to the Board for any comments and a motion.
I'll move the recommended actions. Thank you, Ms. Finley, for the presentation.
Second.
Moved by Friend, seconded by Cony. Please call and roll.
Supervisor Koenig?
Aye.
Friend?
Aye.
Conerty?
Aye.
Capit?
Aye.
And Chair McPherson?
Aye. We will now move to item number eleven. Consider the joint exercise of powers agreement by and among the City of Watsonville, the County of Monterey, the County of Santa Cruz, the Monterey County Water Resources Agency, and the Santa Cruz County Flood Control and Water Conservation District, Zone Number Seven, to form the Poharal Regional Flood Management Agency, authorize the Chair to sign the joint exercise powers agreement, and consider the indemnity agreement regarding the Poharal River flood risk management project, and authorize the Chair to sign the indemnity agreement as outlined in the memorandum of Deputy CAO Director of Public Works. We have three items, the indemnity agreement, the joint powers agreement agreement, and the PRFMA, as well as the JPA slide set for the Board of Supervisors. We have discussed this earlier in our our scheduled public hearing with Zone Seven earlier today. We will, is there a presentation, Mr. Machado, would you be making a presentation?
Yes, thank you, Chair and Board of Supervisors. I do have the same presentation to share with you, and I think for the record, I will still go through it. I'll try to move quickly because I know, I know you have a full agenda still today, if that's okay with you.
Sure, please do.
Okay, I'm going to share my screen. Can everybody see my screen?
Yes.
All right. Thank you. So I'll start by thanking the Board of Supervisors for all of their support of this effort. This is a major effort for the entire county. I'd like to specifically thank Supervisor Capit and Supervisor Friend for all of your community engagement, Supervisor Friend for all of your effective advocacy, and all the efforts that you've all done. It's created some great progress and major milestones that I'll share with you briefly. As we know, the project that we have today was built in nineteen forty-nine. With that said, we've still experienced considerable flooding, a couple of large events in the fifties, a couple of large events in the nineties, which has led to the need for a new project. The project alternatives have been developed over the over many years, actually decades, and most recently, we've secured some major milestones with the December twenty nineteen Director's Report and final feasibility study. That report was our federal environmental clearance, and it has enabled us to now secure federal funds to begin design. That design work is envisioned to kick off this year with the securitization of funding from the federal government in FY twenty of one point eight million, and as Mr. Stredly announced earlier today, that we also received two point eight one five million dollars of federal funding in FY twenty-one, so that our federal match is fully funded to begin and complete the design of phase one. So, great milestone. Additionally, we're working closely with our state partners. We do have a subventions agreement that allows up to a seventy percent state fund match to our local match of the larger project. This is a this is a major effort in itself, in that we are continuing to work with our state partners to further increase that match beyond, due to the nature of our project and the competitiveness of our project. So we're working hard to continue to implement our our state funding agreement. Today's decision for the JPA is a critical milestone. I will share that the formation of this regional flood management joint powers authority has been identified. Oh, goodness gracious. Sorry. That was interesting. Sorry about that. Has been identified as the most efficient and effective governance approach for reducing flood risk on the Lower Poharal River. It's a single-purpose agency that's best positioned to support flood risk reduction, reduction, project implementation, and ensure consistent long-term operations and maintenance. Later this year, we do envision kicking off Prop two eighteen rate assessment that would go to the voters for their considerations so that we could complete our local match funding obligation. We also envision beginning design and levies. As I mentioned, we do have federal funding in place, and later this year, we envision completing the state environmental clearance, CEQA. The the JPA will be the local sponsor. It will provide assurances to state and federal partners for our operation and maintenance. It will be our finance mechanism. It will lead the implementation of financing the project, and it will consist of five member agencies, as you can see there. The JPA is a singular agency focused on flood issues. It is the preference of state and federal partners to deal with just one entity, and we believe that the JPA would provide efficient decision-making authority, and being a single agency can adapt quickly to changing conditions. The current obligations related to the JPA, there are no financial obligations at this point. I will share that any financial obligations will come back as a separate agreement and would be within our current budget authority in Zone Seven, and so we don't envision that being a hurdle in the future. We also, another obligation, the JPA would be to execute any agreements with state, federal partners, and and then also to adopt the indemnity agreement for the City of Watsonville. The powers of the JPA will include to acquire, construct, manage, maintain the infrastructure projects. The powers also include issuance of bonds and participating in financing, entering into contracts and agreements, hiring staff and contractors, and performing all the purposes or all the necessary acts to carry out the purposes of the agreement in agency. The composition of this JPA is proposed as a five-member board consisting of one Board of Supervisor, one Zone Seven Director, a member from, as appointed by the Watsonville City Council, a member of the Monterey County Water Resource Agency, and a member from the Monterey County Board of Supervisors. The JPA will conduct its business based upon a typical quorum, three-fifths of board members. The quorum is sufficient to carry action. Each board member's vote will be equally weighted. We had written an agreement to have an annual budget that requires unanimous votes. Next steps for the JPA will be to set up the structure, develop bylaws, et cetera. Look at, we are looking at interim staffing with existing member staffs, such as our Zone Seven staffing team, and we plan to develop a charter, other guiding documents, and at some point, we would transition all of the operations and maintenance of the project from member agencies to the JPA. The recommended actions before you today are to consider the joint exercise of powers agreement by and among our member agencies to form the Poharal Regional Flood Management Agency and authorize the Chair to sign the joint exercise of powers agreement, and in preference with state and federal government to provide funding to a single governing local sponsor, and to consider the indemnity agreement regarding the Poharal River flood risk reduction project by and among the member agencies, and authorize the Chair to sign the indemnity agreement. And with that, I can answer any questions, and I believe we have staff available to answer questions as well.
Thank you, Mr. Machado. Thank you for your work on this. A great many people have gone into this, as we know. We've mentioned earlier in our discussion that our planned, our scheduled public hearing earlier today. Are there any further comments from members of the Board?
I'll just say, deuce, vote, no?
Very good. Any comments from the public?
Chair, I I see no hands up. So we have no comments from the public.
Okay, I'll return it to the Board. Any comments? Mr. Friend?
I'll move the recommended actions. Thank you, Chair.
Well, second.
Moved by Friend, seconded by Capit. Please call and roll.
Supervisor Koenig?
Aye.
Friend?
Aye.
Conerty?
Aye.
Capit?
Aye.
And Chair McPherson?
Aye. Okay, we will now move to item number twelve, the final item on our agenda today, before we go into a closed session. Consider directing the planning department to include tiny homes, including movable tiny homes, tiny homes on wheels, and tiny homes on foundation. And the ADU code amendments as legal accessory dwelling units, as outlined in the memorandum of understanding from Supervisors Koenig and McPherson. Who is, who'd be making a presentation?
Chair, I'll make a, I'll make a short presentation.
Okay, excuse me, I'm sorry. I was meant to do that. Yes, sir. Go ahead.
Right, I'm going to share. Let's read my desktop here. Right, is that visible for everyone?
Yes.
Great. So, we've recommended approving use of tiny homes in our county. This actually follows in line with actions taken by a number of other cities and counties throughout the state, including the City of Fresno, San Luis Obispo County, the City of Los Angeles, San Diego, San Jose, Humboldt County, and Santa Clara County. So there's lots of model ordinance out there, much of which we've provided to the planning department to work with, and the state has taken the position on movable tiny homes as ADUs, with the Department of Housing and Community Development specifically saying, and this was about the San Diego ordinance when it was proposed in two thousand and nineteen, that HCD supports the city's efforts to encourage and allow a variety of housing choices, including tiny houses as an ADU, as defined in the proposed ordinance amendment. What is a tiny house? Tiny houses can be stick-built, they can be movable, they can even be stackable. The International Residential Code defines a tiny house as being less than four hundred square feet, and movable tiny homes are typically between eight and a half, and they can be as wide as thirteen and a half feet, but typically, they're more in the eight and a half range because they have to be able to move down the highway, and they are also usually registered with the California DMV. The same goes with their typical height of thirteen and a half feet. It's largely based on requirements for moving down the highway. Moveable tiny house is not an RV. There's a number of ways that we can write the ordinance, and again, this is included in model language provided by other jurisdictions that define it in such a way that is typically not an RV. Tiny houses are built to resemble typical cottages or bungalows. A few more examples here. And except movable tiny homes are built on wheels, so really, you're just replacing a foundation with a chassis. And if anything, they can actually be much stronger than a typical home because they're designed to be able to go seventy miles an hour down the freeway, hit a pothole, and survive. So, for example, they don't use dry walls in movable tiny homes. Instead, use plywood for for the walls so that it doesn't crack or anything in moving. Tiny homes are also, you know, compact living, sleeping, cooking, sanitation, and the work and recreation areas. So, you know, all elements that would define them as dwelling units. And, you know, the need for updating our ordinances that while today, these cottages that you see would be considered for an ADU permit, these ones would not. So, again, simply the addition of wheels would, under our current ordinances, make make these structures today illegal. Some of the advantages of tiny homes, they're much cheaper to build than other alternatives. So you can buy a very nice movable tiny home today from the range of eighty-five thousand dollars and build one in three to five months. You know, compare that to the average cost of a stick-built ADU in the in the Bay Area at a hundred and fifty-six thousand dollars and take eighteen months, or the average cost of constructing market-rate apartment unit of four hundred and fifty thousand dollars. So obviously, our community is struggling with affordable housing, and tiny homes and movable tiny homes provide an excellent option for, you know, creating alternative forms of housing that are affordable. And, you know, certainly, as a county, we can't afford to subsidize the creation of market-rate housing or apartment housing directly through through other means. And so tiny homes create a much better alternative. Just some elements of a definition that are taken from the various codes or ordinances that are said, adopted by other jurisdictions. Registered and licensed with the DMV. Wheels and undercarriage would be skirted. Designed to look like a conventional building. If it is, if wheels are not removed, that it have some kind of foundation or support. Today, we've just proposed the creation or the beginning of a process to create an ordinance, so none of these, none of these specifics are actually included in the recommended action, but these are some of the elements that I would like to see personally in finalized ordinance. Design elements as well can ensure that they look like regular dwelling units. You know, we didn't want to just end with a proposal to to include tiny homes on wheels as ADUs because there's other considerations as well, like actually the creation of tiny house communities, like the one you see here, Tiny Tranquility in Wall, Oregon, as for for people of many different income levels. And so ultimately, we want to be able to plan for this kind of use, as well as tiny homes as primary dwellings in the future. And so that's why I, the recommended action actually suggests looking at making tiny homes both primary dwellings as well as, you know, other code updates necessary to allow tiny house communities like this. Why are we considering this now? Well, rebuilding after the fire, obviously, is a huge challenge for our community, and legalizing tiny homes is really going to just create more options for people as they think about how they're going to ultimately move back onto their property. We, of course, there's, we're currently allowing mobile homes and RVs temporary use on 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 properties affected by the fire. However, you know, having a long-term assurance that a movable tiny home will be allowed in the future could allow a family to build a new movable tiny house off-site, start work on that today, move it on-site, ultimately keep that as an ADU, and then continue and pursue a primary dwelling. ultimately keep that as an ADU and then continue and pursue a primary dwelling or construction of a primary dwelling or, you know, even if the village concept is approved, moving another movable tiny home on-site as well. So it's just gonna create more options for people as they look at moving back onto the property. And of course, you know, also we have an urgent need to address homelessness in our community. As I've mentioned before, this was the number one issue I heard on the campaign trail and we've seen tiny homes play a crucial role in addressing homelessness in other communities. You have a overview here of Community First Village in Austin, Texas, which started off with parking spaces for some RVs and then moved into creating a movable or a tiny house village on-site as well. It's been such a successful community that they're expecting to have over 50% of the chronically homeless in Travis County. Tiny homes fit nicely into our operational plan. So this would be Section 2, Goal C, Strategy 2, to pilot initiatives to expand housing options for people of all incomes and increase and diversify housing options. So the recommended actions today, as I alluded to, are to direct the planning department to explore explore a permitting process for tiny homes to include but not to be limited to the addition of tiny homes within the county's accessory dwelling unit ordinance and/or recognition of tiny homes as primary residences within new standalone ordinance. And also to direct the planning department to return to the board on February 23rd with a proposed process and timelines of gathering input about the permitting of tiny homes for members of the public, planning commission, and individual board offices. That's it.
Thank you, Supervisor. Thank you for bringing this item along from my office to, I applaud you for getting right to work on this idea, which has come up numerous times over the past several years. I do support exploring what a permitting process would look like because we need more affordable housing, there's no question about that. And products other than just large apartment buildings or multifamily projects here and there throughout the county. One of our affordability goals is to promote homeownership and tiny homes can really be a roadway to achieve that, and I really appreciate that. As well as if we do come to some agreement on how we're going to do this, it will have a reduced impact on our land use and our water resources that we have here in the county. There's a lot of creativity and developing these individual tiny homes. I really look forward to the public process that will help us determine how to move forward on this. I know folks in my fifth district have expressed interest in developing such an ordinance and possibly locating tiny homes there. So I do appreciate your getting right on this and bringing it forward to the board supervisors. Are there any comments from the board?
Yeah, I have a couple of questions. Thank you, Chair. Thank you, Supervisor Koenig, for bringing this forward. It's exciting that the state has, is now allowing frameworks for local communities to do this. I do have some questions and I recognize you answered a little bit more of it with your presentation, the staff report was a little bit vague on some of the details, but for example, the current ADU ordinance allows ADUs to be as small as 150 square feet, so I was trying to determine at least from a foundation standpoint, not the movable ones, but a foundation standpoint. Other than the reduction to 100 square feet, what would be substantively different in this proposal?
So, I guess I'm trying to answer that. So you're asking what would be substantially different from an ADU?
Our current ADU ordinance allows for an ADU to be as small as 150 square feet, so a tiny home could be as small as 100 square feet, but if it's on a foundation, so it's an ADU basically, which could be a conversion or a standalone. I was just trying to determine, because what it seems like is that you're actually suggesting a completely different set of building standards for this. And so what I wanted to see is then, are we encouraging sort of in that 100 to 400 a shift in how we would look at building standards for ADUs because we currently have a very, in fact, a model ADU ordinance that's been replicated across the state. So I wasn't sure what the substantive difference then was for, say, somebody came in, wanted to build 150 square foot ADU, they could do that today versus what you would be talking about if they wanted to build 150 square foot, say, tiny home on a foundation.
Right, I think the more substantive difference is allowing a 150 square foot movable tiny home, which would not be legal under today's ADU ordinance, right? The fact that it is built on a chassis. And is, you know, ultimately movable. And so that's why we would still, you know, many of the model ordinances that I've looked at would still require some kind of foundation under that chassis, whether it's decomposed granite or other way, you know, to make sure that this is, the structure is not simply sinking into the mud as well as elements like skirting to hide the wheels. But I think that is the distinction as far as, you know, ADUs, movable tiny homes is the element that's built on a chassis. And it's important actually because, you know, it allows incremental homeownership, right? And that someone could own their movable tiny home, rent the space for the ADU or rent the space from a friend who has the property, but still they're building equity at least in the tiny home itself. And so it really, you know, even though it sounds like a minor difference, I think it's a significant change that to allow movable tiny homes in this way.
Well, one of the things, I appreciate you clarifying that. I mean, to me though, just the language of the staff report made it seem like there was on foundation and movable. I'm not totally clear then. It sounds almost like it's movable being placed on a foundation and so those, they maybe aren't two distinct categories then actually as as the staff report implies, so it's just something to, well, I mean, this is gonna get fleshed out, obviously. The board's gonna support moving this forward, but these details are gonna matter because what I'm trying to see is whether what other sort of impacts it could in theory create. When we went through the ADU process, for example, it's a use and you can live in your ADU and now rent out your primary house. So you're trying to downsize, your family's trying to move in or whatever it may be. But we also restricted it from being, you being able to say rent your primary residence or your former primary residence as a vacation rental, for example, so we would, we want to ensure that if we're changing codes to incent somebody to move into a tiny home that maybe isn't necessarily that's their only home in the first place, but they're trying to downsize or it's whatever the reason, that we also aren't trying to, we're not now creating a backend or something like vacation rental, conservative additional component. Also on the movable, I mean, would generators be allowed? Because would somebody, I mean, are they self-powered? Does somebody plug in from a home? Would we look differently in the coastal zone versus or the urban services line versus the rural services line? I mean, out in Correlitis, which you're exceptionally well aware of, there's all kinds of space and that would look very different than what could be allowed in the urban services line. So are we considering in this ordinance having differences depending upon, say, zoning or size of parcel?
I think those are things that are gonna have to be fleshed out based on public feedback, input from your office and other supervisors' offices as well as the planning department.
Okay. I mean, generally, when we introduce a concept like this, we provide sort of a framework to the planning department to start the construct though, right? And so that's why I wanted to raise some of these questions. I thought maybe, I mean, if you knew, you do, if not, if it's just...
I can, I can say that I haven't seen any significant distinctions in the other ordinance I've looked at between one, you know, anything that mentions an urban services line or a distinction between different zoning types.
Okay. All right. Well, I mean, I think that these are gonna be the issues that are gonna be fleshed because we went through this with the ADUs and we went, well, we went pretty far, then the state ended up doing a great job of actually going further and we adopted that when that time came. But on this, I want to be sure that we're not doing something that actually has an adverse impact by not thinking through some of these things. And I think you're on board with that. We're just trying to increase affordable housing. I think everybody on the board is there. And I hope that this is a creative way to do it. I appreciate you two both bringing it forward. But those will be the questions I'll have once the we work with the planning department on the formation of an ordinance. Thank you.
Any other comments from the board? Board members?
I'll make a comment or a question. Thank you for bringing this forward. It's very interesting and when we're talking about 100 square foot, I guess that's, that's the smallest minimum size. Is that correct?
That's, that's how it's been defined in some other ordinances.
Okay. And then that's 10 by 10. I guess, okay, this, it's 100 square feet for the tiny homes or it's 150 square feet for an ADU. What, I'm gonna, I'm gonna mix it up right now.
I believe the current requirement is 150 square feet for minimum size for ADUs.
Right, okay, thank you.
And that's part of, you know, this process is that planning will ultimately reconcile our existing ADU ordinance, you know, with with a definition of tiny home, movable tiny homes. So if that, you know, if that is 100, 100 square feet is allowable for movable tiny home and 150 for, you know, stick-built on a foundation, you know, those distinctions can be fleshed out in this process.
About. And then water, cooking and all that, it's hard to envision all of that taking place at 100 square feet, I guess. I guess like a small mobile home or something like that, not a mobile home, but a RV. I guess it could be done. Okay, that could all be worked out later.
Yeah, and there is a section Q to the California Building Code, which allows for a little, you know, gives greater allowances as far as ladders, crawl space, fire escape, emergency escapes for fire for these kinds of structures.
Yeah, it's just, it's hard for me to imagine something that's small having everything that somebody needs to live. I'd hate to see the size of the bathroom. I mean, if anybody was of large stature, they might have a hard time getting in there, huh?
Any other comments from board members?
Supervisor Coonerty, I appreciate bringing this forward. It's always good to look at new innovations. As Supervisor Friend says, the devil's always in details and figuring out how this works with our existing zoning and land use requirements, but I look forward to that process going forward.
Thank you. No, no other comments. This is not a public hearing. This is a direction, but I would like to have a vote or motion for to to approve that direction to the planning department.
I'll move for approval.
Before we do that, it is an item on the regular agenda. We do have public comment.
Excuse me, I'm sorry.
We're almost there. We have one person. If you would hold on, I will share my screen. Okay. Oops, we now have two people, so we're gonna start with the person whose telephone number ends in 2915. You're being asked to be unmuted. Once you start, the timer will begin. Thank you.
Hello, this is Becky Steinbruner. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Thank you. Supervisor Koenig, thank you for bringing this this fresh action to the public and to the board. I really appreciate it. I ask that the county's Housing Advisory Commission also be involved in this. There's some very knowledgeable people there that will have good input as well. I also have questions about hookups for water and septic or sewage. I'm aware that SoCal Creek Water District treats ADUs as a separate connection and imposes fees, very high fees, I might add, for ADUs. So that sort of issue should also be vetted with the local water agencies and the county environmental health in terms of hooking up to septic if that is not, if there is septic involved. I happen to know of one tiny home that is out in rural area with an incinerating toilet and the problem it causes with the odors for the neighborhood is a problem. So that sort of issue really needs to be discussed. I also applaud the idea of having designated communities as you brought up Supervisor Koenig, with eco-villages, perhaps similar age groups or whatever. I think that would be a real plus. And the county owns land such as in Watsonville behind the clinic there on Freedom Boulevard that could be put to use for this very purpose. I do question however that this could help the county meet the RENA numbers because these are mobile housing units. And what if they move out of the area? How could we really attribute them to helping us meet our RENA numbers without some sort of tracking?
Thank you, and we have one more caller. With the speaker Jerry Peters. You are our next speaker. I'm going to unmute you. When you accept that unmuting, you can begin speaking and I will start the timer. You will have two minutes.
Hi, good afternoon. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Hi, I just actually have two comments. One goes back a little bit. I just wanted to make the comment that it seems we're not reading web comments any longer. The option is still there on the agenda and I know, for a fact, I made a comment earlier and I know others who've made web comments and they're not being read. Just wanted to put that out there. But that being said, thank you Supervisor Koenig for bringing this, you know, the small, the tiny homes into the arena to be looked at. I think this is a big movement across the country and I think there's big possibilities for folks in this area to be able to explore that as far as having affordable housing. I would ask in part of your direction to the planning department to put forth some direction to not necessarily reinvent the wheel, to look at other areas across the country or even across the state that have guidelines set forth already so that we're not, like I said, reinventing the wheel and making it more difficult to get some of these things done. And I definitely appreciate Becky Steinbruner's comment about the incinerating toilet, but I think looking at the possibility of compounding toilets with these tiny homes could be an excellent solution for folks, especially in areas such as the San Lorenzo Valley with limited with limited capacity in their septic and that has been a limitation for ADU for them for a long time. Thank you so much.
And Chair, I do not see any other people with their hands up for the public comment.
Okay, thank you. And we will move back to the board for a motion to for you initiate the direction to the planning department to include tiny homes in our planning process. We have probably a motion by Supervisor Coonerty.
Yes, I'll move the recommended actions.
And I will second. And I think that this may be implied in the motion, but I think that was a good suggestion to go to the Housing Advisory Commission, obviously the planning commission over time. So I don't know if you consider that just a friendly amendment to consider, I think you already talked about this, considering ordinances are already in effect as the, as a presenter had said, but also that we go to our Housing Advisory Commission and also the planning commission in advance, coming back to the board.
I'm happy to accept that as a friendly amendment.
Right, I would like to second. I appreciate you bringing it forward.
Do, please call the rule.
Supervisor Koenig?
Aye.
Friend?
Aye.
Coonerty?
Aye.
Capit?
Aye.
Chair McPherson?
Aye.
Okay, that concludes our regular agenda for today. We will now move into closed session. We have two items. A conference with legal counsel on the threat to public services or facilities and a conference with legal counsel on pending litigation, Government Code Section 54950.9D1. Mr. Counselor, are the actions reportable?
Thank you, Chair McPherson. There are no reportable actions.
Okay, then I will move that we recess into the the closed session and after which we will adjourn. The next board of supervisors meeting will be next Tuesday, February 2nd at 9:00 a.m. on February 2nd, 2021. With that, we will move into closed session. Thank you. We'll take, it's 10 minutes to one. Let's meet at 1 o'clock. Let's just take 10 minutes and...